You guys ready?
Yep.
Yeah, stay in this room. This is where I stay. And timer, he can both me. If you forget the timer, he's really good at it.
You're gonna have to call me in April. We're trying to.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a quick announcement. There was an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss personnel and legal matters. The meeting is being recorded by the board secretary. And as far as public comment tonight, we're gonna go with three minutes for everybody because we have a very, very full agenda. So please try to keep your comments, those of you that speak, to three minutes or less. And let's have the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Secretary, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Kern, Mr. McCucci, Mrs. Mitchell, Mr. Akmanowicz, Ms. Weed, Mr. De Liberto, and Mr. Klein.
Here. And that takes us to the approval of the minutes. A motion is needed to approve the minutes of the February 28th, 2019, meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Quakertown Community School District. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to our first general public comment. Has anybody signed up for a public comment tonight?
Yes. Matthew Ash.
Obviously, I'm not Matthew.
I was gonna say. Go to the podium and state your name and area of residence, please.
My name is Amy Taylor. I'm Matthew's mother. And we live in Trumbowersville Borough. Matthew sends his apologies. He had an emergency at work. And he's actually still there. But I've, I wanted to come present his petition on his behalf. Him and other enlisted students in, that are seniors, would like to wear their military sashes during graduation. Just so they can show the, the branch of the military that they've enlisted in and their pride. I wasn't, he had a whole thing written and I wasn't prepared. I apologize.
No, don't apologize.
979 signatures. That's not bad.
No, it's not.
And that's it, I guess.
Okay. I'll take your petition.
I know we normally don't comment during public comment, but I just wanted to mention something that another district did to be inclusive to everyone who would be interested in freedom of expression. They allowed, so I'm just asking the board to maybe consider, they would allow graduation, students who are graduating to wear whichever group they identify with that's meaningful to them underneath their graduation uniform. And then, once they take the tassel from, you know, over, that they would be able to then, so that could be any group. It could be, you know, I'm very partial, being a veteran, to the military, but I also understand people who say, no, it's not fair to, to everyone. So it would be, it kinda could be fun, too, if you think about it. Would allow students with, from any group to, again, it's after graduation is completed. So, just a thought, wanted to throw out there.
We'll discuss that. Thank you, Ms. Mitchell, and thank you, Ms. Taylor. Please, please tell Matthew we said thank you.
I will.
Thank you.
Augustine Bocelli.
Good evening. My name's Augustine Bocelli. I'm from Richland Township. And I passed out nine of these to the board members. I'm here in concern of some basic school policies, so I'm gonna read this first and then maybe you can help enlighten me. But I'm here to first thank the people in the district who take interest in truly helping and building our children. These are the people who become even more valuable and influential to the students and families that will help our children and community grow. I'm here tonight due to the increased security of the entire school system. We all need to believe and trust our children will be safe. Our children become wise with knowledge and hopefully even wiser with social acceptance and tolerance to allow and ensure programs like anti-bullying work. Maybe help identifying those who feel or are left out to learn better ways to interact and communicate without being labeled by others as the oddball or worse. Some have negative consequences when a child has issues in learning, behavior, or even hiding from abuse, or those who have been abused. What about those who suffer from loss when living around addiction? I could go on and would not come close to what turns some children into wanting to hurt another or themselves. But we should also be protecting these children from harm when it is not in the form of violence, physical violence, or abuse at home. With the ever-changing steps that are taken to protect our children, we cannot let these steps also become ways to violate our children and their basic rights of law and trust. I'm asking for the school to review the policies and procedures so possibly dictates protection from self-incrimination and interrogations or related tactics without a parent, guardian, or legal counsel present, not a principal, guidance counselor, or other school staff. But I do believe the subjects of learning and being safe and secure are the reasons why we allow our children to travel away from home and family and into the world that changes quickly. When allegations or acts can become criminal for our children, what rights of protection are there and what educational steps can be offered before we get to this point? And I basically say this because my son was accused of an accusation and interrogated for six hours or was held with six hours without being allowed to contact his father or guardian or advocate or legal. And we talked about this issue and it was resolved with the district, the school district intended, but the issue of what's happened to the next child that comes up and faces this? What is there to protect them? Because this could be as simple as I say something and it becomes a criminal charge or I do something. And my son's 11 years old. I've seen kids older and younger fall into categories. And where's the protection for them? Because at this age, they are learning something. Younger ages, it's just a little difficult. And then I've seen my nephew, who was a high school student, a little sarcastic and wise guy, got suspended and then expelled for lighting a Bunsen burner. He's dead and buried now because he was in the alternative school where he met some really good friends that did drugs and now he's buried. So again, I'd like to see something lead up to protecting not only the kids at school, but steps or programs that could help identify these and others for our safety, not just the kids. But as a community, we need to see that become more evident in the steps we take and not just how we punish them, but educate them.
Thank you, Mr. Bocelli. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, moving on. I'm sorry. The superintendent report, sir, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We have a lot tonight on the superintendent's, we have a lot tonight on the superintendent's report, but first, I am tickled, tonight we have three Girl Scouts with us. About a month and a half ago, I got, received an email from Megan, is that right? It was from Megan? And then a follow-up from Megan's mom and asking for these three young ladies to do a project. And, and it is so awesome to see young ladies at this age showing their leadership and obviously a lot of success. Look at all those badges. Well, maybe I'll move this to the side so you can see the badges. But I'm ready for you to talk to the group and to the board and I will move this down to you and tell them your story.
Hi, I'm Megan Gara and I'm in fifth grade at Poth.
I'm Kara Kelly and I'm a fifth grader at Trum.
I'm Riley McGinty and I'm a fifth grader at Richland.
We are Junior Girl Scouts from Troop 6366. We are working on a bronze award, which is the highest honor a junior girl scout can earn. In order to earn this award, we must complete a take action project. After working on a service project for Martha and Luton King Day, we were inspired to create a project that would directly help people in our community. We decided to hold a toiletry drive during the months of February and March. At the end of March, we plan to sort the items and provide toiletry kits to Quakertown Food Pantry and the Quakertown Community Outreach. After speaking with the people from the Quakertown Food Pantry, we were made aware of an immediate need for toiletries for the upper bucks code blue. We quickly met and sorted the travel size items we had collected so far and we were able to meet that goal and within a few days. We have had such a positive response to our project that we have already made two large donations to the Quakertown Food Pantry. We have still many items to sort, package, and deliver to the food pantry and Quakertown Community Outreach, and we are exploring ways to make our project sustainable.
At the beginning of our project, we emailed Dr. Harner to ask permission, for permission to place bins in all of the QCSD schools for our project. In March, we were given permission to do, to do so. Our moms helped us let all the schools know about our project and coordinate bins being dropped out of, at every building. Many of the buildings have promoted our project on social media. We also received the support of Mr. Wexelblatt, who included information about our project in Q Ed, Up for Education, and in the Q. We would like to thank Dr. Harner and everyone in the school district for the support of our project.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'm impressed you said Gary's last name properly.
Well, it's real exciting that Mr. Wexelblatt wrote a story, as you know he would. And that story's up online already and we're, I just, we're excited. We know that pretty soon they'll be rotating into the student board rep seat here in just a couple of years, sitting up here with the entire board, because we know your leadership is already starting and we're very pleased. Parents, thank you very much for your tenacity and working with us and your patience and this is exciting. Thank you, ladies.
And if I may comment to young ladies on how well they spoke, you guys did an awesome job.
The next item on the superintendent's report is a, just a follow-up on an email that I shared with you all, a, a letter to the editor, opinion piece that was printed in the Intelligencer last week, I believe it is when it was out there early last week. And it was about cyber charter schools. And, and I shared also the, the response that came from the Commonwealth Foundation. What I'm gonna ask you to do later on is to sign on and for a resolution that talks about cyber charter schools. This is not about brick and mortar charter schools, but this is about cyber charter schools. For the, for the audience, for the board, right now, we, we send out to, to cyber charter schools 1.92 million dollars. 1.92, which is almost 2% of our budget, off to cyber charter schools. It costs, we have our own cyber program here inside the district and it's the same idea, same concept. It's online. We have our, but the people, the students who participate in our program have also the access, local access, to participate in sports, to participate in any other program, extracurricular activity, and do all those things. That program costs us $2,000. When we have a cyber school student, we pay for a regular education student $14,000 per student. Again, 2,000 it costs us, it costs us 14,500, about that, 14,500. For a student has disabilities and how they figure that number out, they add up our total budget that we spend on, it's a state report that we send to the state, the total allocation and our expenditures on students with disabilities, which is about around 7, 17 million dollars, divided by the number of students that we have who are disabled, which is, this year is 950 students. And that comes out to about $30,000 on average a student. So if a student is online that is in a cyber charter school, we send that $30,000 off to them. 25%, around 25% of our students who leave us to go to a cyber charter school, about 25% are regular ed students who become students with disabilities. So they, they double, more than double the, the cost and expenditures to us. And again, it costs us about $2,000. There's a new bill that's, that's, I hope it becomes bipartisan. In the House it is, in the Senate, right now I'm being told that the Senate leadership has told their, their senators not to sign on to the bill. But currently, we have SB Senate Bill 34 and House Bill 526. And my recommendation to you, and you can see the resolution that we have there, districts across the county have, most of the districts across the county have, have signed on it. And I was pleasantly surprised, not surprised, but I was honored that they used the, my opinion piece from last week, because I had sent it out previously to it being published and their boards had signed on this, identical, or similar resolutions. I kinda made our resolution more specific to us and our costs. But anyway, that, my recommendation later on in the meeting is you approve the resolution.
Like you said there, too, I think it's interesting to note, it's almost identical or is identical curriculum for the cyber that we do.
Well, it's better.
Here?
It's ours.
Yeah, so they're basically, it's almost the same and, and they're charging double.
No, seven times.
Seven times.
Seven times. It's 2,000 versus 14,000.
Well...
Yes, sir.
Except, they have to do a lot more to support the students. Like they have to provide all the IT, all the computers, all the, everything. So I don't think it's, it's not really apples to apples to say 2,000 versus, like, why does it cost us for, you know, you're sending 14,000 and pocketing 6,000, right?
Well, the IT, we, all of our students here, 6 through 12, have a one-to-one. They have their own computer. And we have...
But that's not included in your 2,000 estimate, is it? I mean, I don't wanna, so I don't wanna...
It's already in our, in our budget.
No, but I'm, I'm just saying, I don't know that it's apples to apples, and I'm not trying to defend the PA cyber. It's another government approach to try to solve education, right? My, my, I guess my only concern is giving a chance to have something other than a monopoly and have some diversity. There's a lot of people out there who can't, you know, maybe they got bullying at, you know, they have very little alternative.
Well, we offer cyber as well.
Well, we do now.
Mr. President, can I say that since, before this discussion gets too far into it, we, since we are gonna move on a resolution later in the meeting, can we do it at that time?
Yeah. Thank you. Next presentation is from Ms. Laura Lomax from the Pearl Buck International. I will tell you, for the last two years, Ms. Lomax and her team from Pearl Buck have been, just simply outstanding. They have supported us, helped us, mentored us with the diversity committee, with instruction, with surveys, board discussions that we've, I think everyone in this, all on the board have participated in with Laura herself. And, and she's here to wrap up the, and discuss what she's done so far and, and we'll go on to phase two of our diversity challenge here in, in the district.
Welcome, Ms. Lomax.
Thank you. Who said that?
I did.
Hello. Thank you all so much. It's good to see all your faces again. So I'm Laura Lomax, Vice President of Programs at Pearl Buck. And in three minutes, I'm gonna sum up the whole year. No, I'm not. We're a nonprofit that's been in this community since 1949, very close to here. We welcome you all there. So I want to start with a quote from Pearl Buck that I thought would be fitting. Pearl Buck said, can you all hear me okay? "Once the what is decided, the how always follows. We must not make the how an excuse for not facing and accepting the what." That was Pearl Buck in a book to my daughters with love from 1967. I thought this was fitting because when I think about Quakertown, there was, the what that happened was in late 2017, the school board, Dr. Harner and his teams, were confronted with a troublesome what situation. Unkind words, people feeling invisible, comments about sexual orientation, you're so poor, and culminating in a use of hateful comments hurled at a visiting team. What, what else happened? More stories, teachers and administrators feeling alienated. And then what? The media, the community feeling horrible. Dr. Harner then said, I've gotta identify this what. And the what is, we have a problem. And that includes perception and reality. That we might not be a welcoming community, as told in these stories in the media about our community. So what is the truth? Then Dr. Harner decided, and the board, to examine the how. How do we mend this community? How can we assure that all students, teachers, administrators feel safe? How do we make new families feel welcomed? So Dr. Harner and the team selected an outside organization, Pearl Buck International, to examine the school climate. Is Quakertown a welcoming school district? Are they meeting all students where they are and guiding them to success? So just to get a little detailed, we worked with about 473 respondents, including board members, teachers, administrators, educators, non-instructional staff, I think there were several union members even in some of the sessions, leadership. We met with each, each building. I got a chance to talk to each person, to hear the stories about how heavy this whole situation really weighed. And I heard the stories about how these, these educators, this district really cares about each of these students. And I was very, very heartened by that. Lastly, we created a district-wide diversity and inclusion committee, inviting teachers, parents, and other concerned committee members. I think the school, the district has other committees that are also working, but we wanted to get something that was really bringing in everybody together. I'm sort of touched, sorry. So I came here as a member of the community, as a person of color, African-American, really not knowing what to expect. I've lived in this area for a very long time. I've read the articles, I've heard the stories. And I proceeded to meet with the, the groups and then each individual, a lot of individual, I think 300 or so. And I gotta tell you that this whole thing about human interaction is not a perfect science, but Quakertown is doing as good as anybody else. I like to think of it as like porcupines, people, and we're gonna brush up against each other every once in a while and get prickly, but really, you all have a wonderful institution. The, the scientific name is that you are really in a place where you are really respecting commonalities and maybe needing to look more at differences. But that's where every school district and most organizations in the world are, right in the middle. So I just say, thank you so much for having Pearl Buck here. With the continued empathy, resilience, and ongoing learning, you all will achieve your ends. And I thank you.
Ms. Lomax, before you leave, I just want to say that, I mean, I've sat in on, on several of the committee meetings, even though I'm not on the committee per se, but, you know, the work that's being done is really important. And you've got committed individuals on that committee. I just wish that we saw more community members come out and participate in it. But thank you so much for coming here, for, for doing the work that you've done. I know your work isn't done yet, but every time I see you, I'm happy to see you, so.
Thank you. So if I could just say, it's, it's our work, but it's also your work.
Yeah.
People like Dr. Hoffman, I see Camille, who was very involved, of course, Dr. Harner, leading the charge. And I hear words like inclusion, diverse, I'm hearing these words and I'm really, Mr. Anderson, I had a wonderful conversation with Mr. Anderson, but thank you all so much and I'm really heartened and I hope you all feel that you're on a path to really turn these things around. Thank you.
The last part of our presentation this evening is the parent safety committee. Ms. Edwards.
Okay, presenting to you this evening are a number of members from the parent slash community safety committee that have been working throughout this year to learn about what our best, what our practices are in regards to safety and identify areas where they could make recommendations to improve. So I'm just gonna, without any other introduction, I will ask them as they speak to introduce themselves. And I will just let them do their presentation.
Thank you, Nancy Ann. Good evening, everyone. My name's Stephanie Zakowski. I'm from Richland Township. I'm here to basically start off our presentation tonight on the community, the findings of the community, community safety committee. I'm not, yeah, it's on. Thank you. I'll just give you a nod. Unfortunately, we all have seen some of the local and national headlines, these are just a few of them, that our committee and has come across during our, our meetings and the times that we have been getting together since the fall. A lot of these headlines deal with threats to student safety, student anxiety, and resources and things that schools are doing in order to help improve school safety efforts. So the purpose of our committee really was to improve school safety here in Quakertown and to increase both student, staff, and parent confidence in the safety of our schools by taking a look at some best practices in school safety, reviewing the current practices in the Quakertown Community School District, identifying opportunities for improvement, because this is definitely an evolving process, and recommending future actions to, to you, the board, that will contribute to the prevention of school violence here in our district. All of our committee meetings that we had were open to the public and were held here at the District Services Center. When we met, we did set up some norms. I'm not gonna go through all of these for you, but some of the key ones I did want to point out for everyone is that the recommendations that we make, are making, we wanted to make sure that they were based on facts, not fear. We also wanted our recommendations to be based on research and best practices, not opinion. So we had a lot of times when we would have discussion, we, we tried to keep that as a focus. The committee did meet 10 times. It was comprised of mostly parents, but some of whom were in law enforcement. We had some guidance counselors, teachers, and just parents like myself, who have been on other committees and, and wanted to get involved in this. Over the course of those meetings, we met with representatives, various stakeholders throughout the district. We met with principals, we met with guidance counselors, we met with students, we met with the SROs. So we really tried to get input from all of the various stakeholders in the district because these are the people who are on the front lines and go through this every day. We also had some resources, some reading that was provided by Nancy Ann. Like I said, we had various presentations. The meeting that we had with the students at the high school was very informative for all of us. And again, we did try to focus on facts, what they were happening, as opposed to, you know, what we thought as members of the committee was happening. And those meetings were very insightful. We did also review school board policies relating to student safety, wellness. We didn't just focus on safety aspects. We did, we spent a lot of time talking about mental health awareness, student anxiety, and things of that nature, behavioral supports that are in place. in place. So, our findings and recommendations, our committee's recommendations are broken into really four main areas. The first one being facilities and equipment, second, protocols and staff action, third, support for students, and the fourth, education and community awareness. And all of these were important to us. One thing I do want to note for people who are here in the audience, the presentation that you'll see here recommends some of the highlights in the recommendations. It has been, in some areas, it is intentionally vague. A lot of the material that we covered was highly confidential, so in some cases, it is intentionally vague. We did prepare a detailed report for the members of the school board that does include a little bit more detail and specifics in some areas. So, in terms of facilities and equipment, I'm going to cover that part. The first recommendation we would like to make the board, and this one was something that everyone was in agreement of and think, felt is of top and utmost importance, is that we need to conduct a risk and vulnerability assessment and prioritize any recommendations that would come out of that. We have some great policies, but one of the things that we did notice sometimes is, are they, you know, are they being followed as they're being written? So, taking a look at assessing where there are gaps and areas for improvement. Some areas have been already identified, but we really would like someone who is an expert in this to take a look at that throughout our district. The second thing is to improve security during arrival and departure times, particularly at the high school and Strayer. If anyone has been to the high school in the morning, there are kids in and out and in and out all morning long. So, taking a look at some of that and determining if there are ways that we can improve that. As those discussions evolved, we did have some people brought to our attention that it's not just something we want to look at at the middle school. The dismissal procedures at some of the elementary buildings, we thought we should also take a look at that as well. Let's see, D, improving safety in the high school parking lot. That's an area where the lighting in the back parking lot specifically, may want to take a look at that. There's a lot of stuff that happens at the high school, weekends, evenings, and all of that. So, taking a look at some of that and improving some of the traffic patterns behind the building on the weekend when you have, there was a wrestling tournament. I know people, they just don't really know which way to go, and that is also an area where we do have students, newly licensed students, driving amongst some distracted audience members in that area, so possibly taking a look at those facilities to see if there's improvements. Developing action plan procedures to improve event security at each building. Again, we have different events. These are all community facilities, so taking a look at that. Ensuring Allison-related safety training is provided to food service and custodial staff. These are members in our buildings, so they need to be involved as well, and that includes first aid and CPR. Just a few more here related to facilities and equipment. G is purchase additional equipment for SROs, and there are some details in that in your report, and purchasing stop-the-bleed kits for each classroom. Revising protocols to expedite the provision of water and necessary supplies to an evacuation point. This is something that came out of both the incident that happened earlier at Strayer and one that had happened at the high school. It was last year or the year before. When we have, whether it is a drill or a perceived potential threat hoax or not, making sure that there is, if it is going to be an extended period of time, there are water and necessary supplies. So, just looking at those protocols in that regard. And then, the last one is consider visual emergency alerts to supplemental auditory alerts. This is something that came out of talking to some of the principals in some of our buildings. There may be gaps in terms of the PA systems and things of that nature, so if we could take a look at that and maybe look at supplementing with some type of visual emergency alert, if in fact, there is an alert in the building. Any questions regarding facilities and equipment before I turn it over to Amy, who is going to talk about protocols and staff action? Thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy Harwick, and I am from Richland Township. I am going to talk about protocols and staff action. The first item on my list is the volunteer policy. Not only was this discussed with our committee, but also with many of the parent committees, the parent groups in the different districts, different buildings, sorry, that it should remain the same as the volunteer policy as far as any clearances that need to be followed. We, as Steph said, looked at policies that our district currently has, and not necessarily just knowing that they were on paper, but are we following them, and are they strict enough or black and white enough to, you know, not have any gaps? We also talked extensively about vaping. At some point, we discussed, is it a safety issue? Not only a health, safety issue for our students, but a lot of students, when we talked to them at the high school, felt that it was an area where they, at times, felt pressured or bullied. So, we definitely looked at different areas and strategies to kind of cut down on the numbers that we're seeing. We discussed privileges, just outside-the-box training for parents, not just having training at the school that they have to come to, but, you know, just different ways to reach parents and students. We also talked about training for the fifth-grade students and making it appropriate for their age level, but we feel that it is only a matter of time due to siblings and older students and how prevalent it is till it reaches the elementary school level. So, we're trying to be proactive in reaching that age group. The secret shopper, we talked about, different buildings have different policies, or I guess they have the same policies, but how they follow them as far as raptor and allowing parents to enter the building. So, I think just about every meeting, somebody since the last meeting had tried to get into school, and we would report back if we got in without our license or if we didn't. So, you know, we really have to kind of have that zero tile. It has to be, you follow it to the rule no matter what. Strayer, we use as a huge example, because you don't get in that building unless you have a meeting and they follow the protocol. The next thing on my list is to increase drill options, a wider variety of scenarios, especially to the older students. We don't want them to be so focused on having to have a teacher or a staff member direct them what to do, but kind of give them that ability or the freedom to kind of adapt in certain situations and just know what decisions to make. We talked about having drills outside of just the classroom where you're sitting at your desk and you have a teacher there to guide you. Another issue that we talked about is not having school on election days. I think there's three buildings we decided that that would have an impact on potentially, so that we usually have those days scheduled off, but it would not be an option of using those days for makeups. Another item that we discussed after the Strayer incident was having middle school students, giving them the ability to carry their phones with them during the day, but off. We know that this creates a whole other potential area for issues. We talked about having them, put them in, you know, holders in the front of the classroom so that they don't have them under their desk. We don't have all the answers for that, but we definitely think that that's something that needs to be evaluated. It would help cut down on stress for parents in certain situations. Increase improvement, I'm sorry, empowerment of staff to challenge visitors. As the schools have become more and more strict with the no entrance or the having to show identification, parents are giving more pushback. And so, we want to give the staff the power to explain the situation by educating parents why we're doing this, by having signs posted, to cut down on the frustration and explain the purpose of having those stricter guidelines, but more following what's in place. We also talked after the Strayer incident about how we reunify parents and students, kind of do some training on things to do and not to do in those situations. Having them be in a more streamlined matter would help cut down on issues for the staff trying to get the students out of the building that they're in or back to their parents or back home. So, we want to look at kind of doing that training ahead of time. After Strayer, we also looked at the IU getting involved and helping to offer temporary shelters and medical equipment for students that need special services. Just having them removed from the building, if it's cold out or if they need certain things, you know, we needed to plan for that. We wanted to offer more training to staff in additional areas as far as threats, warning signs, triggers. We also talked about making sure that they all even knew what a vaping device looked like. Do they know that they're being charged in their laptops in their desk? So, just all kinds of training for teachers. They're the front line. Safe-to-say training for students and parents. Do we do that at back-to-school night? Other opportunities to kind of explain what the purpose of it is, what the best practices are for certain situations that can maybe wait till the next day versus things that definitely need that immediate response. And we want to collect more data of guidance, getting involved, of bullying incidents, of levels of violence, to kind of see where the trend is going. Are the things that are putting in place helping to make things better? Are they getting worse? So, kind of collecting that data and making more informed decisions would definitely be a help. Any questions before I turn it over to Kathy?
I had a couple, actually.
Okay.
One, I want to thank you guys for doing what you guys did. I know a lot of time and effort went into this, and it's kind of clear by the presentation. I do like that you called out the volunteer policy first, that the safety committee and other parents' groups are recommended not to change it, to keep it as is, so volunteers aren't treated any different than employees. But my questions were, the secret shopper part and the student being involved in tabletops. What were you finding that you thought the secret shopper would be important? And then, is there, are students not involved with tabletop now? And is that something that would be new?
Okay. As far as the secret shopper, we learned at some of the levels that you would go to a school and they, just because we had the policy that you had to raptor and you didn't need to go into the building unless you had a reason to be there, that we were, parents were still getting into the building and not following those policies. So, we just thought it would be a good idea to kind of have a secret shopper to not check up on them, but to verify that those policies are being followed. It doesn't do us any good to have them on paper if we're not following them to the T. I mean, especially that front line, front door, that's vital to safety on a lot of levels. So, that secret shopper, that was what our thought process was, to make sure that we're following what's on paper. And as far as the student tabletop, I think we were, in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nancy Ann, but in the past, we, they've done the Alice drills, and we've talked about what to do in the classroom, but I think they want to get student involvement and outside of that. You know, not just having a teacher there to say, to guide them through the certain steps, but to kind of think outside that. You know, would they know what to do in certain situations where they're kind of have more independence, where there's not an organized classroom situation? Also, to get their input on different things and just, it's a lot of discussion. It's stuff that we can't even plan for, but you, as you have these discussions, you kind of learn more things and go from there. Anybody else?
What sort of discussions did you have around the balance of too much emphasis on all the bad? You know, it's a really extremely rare event, right? And there's always that balance of, wow, let's make sure every month we practice, you know, terrorist attack on the school and shelter in place and, you know, like raising the anxiety of the kids for arguably a minimal reason, or, you know, the chances of a meteor hitting us is probably greater. So, did you have those kinds of discussions? That's a tough balance, right?
We did. We did. And I don't know if this answers, but part of, one of the first meetings that we had, we had papers, and we kind of all just got, like, right ideas of what we thought safety mattered, what we needed. And we went as extreme as, you know, the metal detectors and more SROs and that, but as we talked more, we learned that there's more important to do the preventative and the mental health and identifying kids that are struggling or need help. So, we talked about that, but it's also important to be prepared. And so, just having, you know, more conversations, Strayer, you know, on paper, it sounded like everything was great, but then you go through the actual event, and we learned a lot of things that we need to do differently or areas that we identified that need additional work. So, I did go to a tabletop discussion with the teachers at the high school a few weeks ago, and they had some training there from the police department. And one of the things that he said was that this is something that you're going to do forever. Like, you, we constantly have to have these discussions and as threats evolve and change and as things change in the world, but we definitely talked about that balance and making it age-appropriate. The conversation you have with a 12th grader is not going to be the same one you have with a 5th grader.
I'd also jump in there, too.
Yes, anybody.
You were mentioning about the anxiety, that if you think back, how long have you been doing fire drills? And now the kids run through fire drill, and it's like nothing to them, whether it's growing up, they don't know. They just know what to do. And unfortunately, Alice drills, not that we're saying it needs to be done every month, but Strayer was a perfect example of what that did to those kids. It created anxiety in them, and it was a non, it turned out to be not a real event, but it was real to them as they were going through it. And there was anxiety among those kids, and that's where the phones came into play, because we were getting real-time calls from our children who were like, "I don't know what's going on. Come get me. I want to go home," you know. So, I think that, just like we do with fire drills, if drills, Alice drills, not that you want to constantly talk about somebody bursting in your classroom door, which you don't, but the reality is, it's becoming more common. And these are things that we do need to role-play. We need to come up, if you're in the, at the high school in the gym eating lunch, where there's not an aide there or somebody here there unsupervised, what do you do? You need to know how to do that. And so, these are situations that we discuss that it's very important kids are able to think when they're, and the 5th grader may not have that responsibility, but we need to empower those older students. And Strayer's example, well, I'm sorry, Strayer's incident was a perfect example of, they need to practice. They need to role-play. Maybe not every month, but more frequently, there was a level of anxiety for the students at that point.
And I'm just going to quick add, we actually address that in Supports for Students, the next section of doing debriefing after every drill or incident, not just after a major incident. So, to help quell those anxieties.
Yeah. And to that point, I like the idea of the tabletop, because I think a lot of interesting things were learned on the Strayer thing. Like, one of them, I thought, I never really thought of, is how do the buses exit? Who has the key to the fence? Like, that was like one of the things that they had to find somebody for, and then that kind of evolved from that type of thing. So, it was interesting sitting on the meetings and hearing some of the things that were going on.
I'll say one more thing. Realistically, these aren't conversations that you have to have just in the schools. We had a cop that came to that initial Alice meeting that we had at our elementary school, how many years ago, five years ago, and then again, when emergency services at the high school, that this is something that you have to instruct your kids to always know. So, we, I talk about my kids, you know, when you're at the movies, like, just know where your exits are. I mean, these are conversations that, I don't have an elementary school kid, and I wouldn't have that, but they're, it does help them outside of just the school. Anything else? Okay, Kathy sucks.
Good evening. I'm Katherine Bianco. I'm in Richland Township. So, I am going on to the next section, Supports for Students. Our first recommendation is that a committee of students are formed at each of the secondary buildings to allow students a platform to address any safety concerns. On the elementary level, we recommend finding an age-appropriate way to have a 5th grade committee. So, we find that students have insights, and students perceive these incidents and drills differently that we might not be focusing on. So, allowing them to come to the table in safety committees and give their feedback could give us some valuable insights that we're missing. The next one is, we recommend an increase of SAP counselors and social workers to help alleviate some of the more intensive case management from the school-based counselors. We have a good ratio in our district compared to other districts. However, there's still a lot of additional duties our counselors do, and so, we're seeing that our students aren't being able to see their counselors as much as what they should. Our counselors aren't able to call them down as much as they should because of the intensive case management needs of some of our students. So, increasing those supports will allow our school-based counselors to be able to see those students. During our research, we found a need for more support staff, additional training, and varying level, pay levels for advanced skills to meet the current needs and to be in line with our goals to have a safer school environment. And the day after an incident at a building can just be as hectic, so we recommend that after every drill or incident, the help team be available to provide additional supports to the school. So, this is in addition just to the debriefing, to also have the help team members in that building. The district always conducts an after-action review, an AAR, after every drill or incident, but we recommend that the students be part of this, and a debrief of the situation occurs in some fashion, whether it be in homeroom, assembly, or another format. So, as we just discussed with Strayer, the next day, what was going on? So as we just discussed with Strayer, the next day, what was going on for the students? As we as adults learned, it was a hoax, it wasn't a real incident, but it was real to them. So there needs to be something in place that these students can come in the next day and at least have five minutes to go, wow, yesterday was crazy, would you think? And give them that platform to at least decompress from the event from the day before. There's a need to increase education of social media use and internet safety, especially during an active event in a building for both students and parents. One way to do this is to take the education to the parents instead of having set nights for the specific education. We know the district already puts out events for the parents and invites them to come to either the school or the district building, but the turnout is really low. So we're suggesting that maybe we go to where they are. We have a lot of local sporting organizations. So during booster club meetings, having a table or having somebody represented there to say, hey, just wanted to give you this information. Back to school nights, community days. There's, I know Richland Township does their community day in September. Going out more to the community to share this information and we may be able to touch base with more parents. Research has shown that students are one of the first people to see a difference in their classmates. The students need to be trained better in recognizing morning signs and how to appropriately share that information with an adult within the school or at home. So we want to make sure our students are comfortable with the next steps they should take. The district rolled out Safe to Say, which is a great program. We still emphasize that they really should go to an adult first, but if they don't feel comfortable, go to Safe to Say. But the students still need to be better trained because we have discussed Safe to Say and a lot of the first week messages they got and a lot of follow-up, a lot of it was old, a lot of it was unfounded, a lot of it wasn't really appropriate to put to Safe to Say. These students need to be trained better to even understand what they're looking at and to say, hey, my friend needs help, my friend's in trouble. More and more schools are coming on board to creating special places in schools for students to go to calm down and learn coping skills for their stress and anxiety. Instead of handing out consequences, the undesirable behavior is treated. How amazing is the academy at Quakertown? To have a mini version in the elementary school or middle school would be great, but as we know, there isn't much room right now for that. Space is a concern in addressing behavioral needs and providing limited quiet time spaces. So that leads us into our last supports for students recommendation and having social, emotional learning and coping skills as a special on the elementary level and perhaps combine maybe librarian, digital literacy. There are a lot of kids sliding under the radar and not connecting with a guy and counselor or another school personnel. So having it as one of their rotations on how do I cope with my anxieties? How do I handle my stress? Would then already put the building blocks together to make them stronger by the time they get to high school. Everyone is so focused on how can we fix these kids? Why don't we start just preparing them for life and giving them the skill sets they need so we're not fixing anything by the time we get to the high school level and trying to Band-Aid all the issues? So that was, oh, yes, that was all of our recommendations for this section. Is there any questions before I turn it over to Diane for our last section?
I had a question.
Yes.
I feel real strongly about this section because a lot of it, my feelings are is student experience. I know we talk a lot about what happens in the case of a catastrophe, but I think when you talk about the day-to-day life of a student, no matter what age, there's things that happen at home or in their life that they maybe just don't understand. And one of the early asks I had at one of the board meetings was just to have a principal at the end of a morning announcement say, hey, listen, if you're struggling with something today, know you're surrounded by people that care about you. And I know Dr. Bubser does something like that on Fridays. And Ms. Edwards had shared a story that sometimes students skip class when they're confronted with maybe a teacher or an adult that wasn't helpful to them, welcoming to them. But when you talk to the students and said, you know, what are your concerns as far as safety? I think you guys had said it wasn't the major threat, so it was, what was it? Just the bullying and the day-to-day type of thing, correct?
Yes. Yeah, the highest safe to say responses currently was bullying.
Yeah. Could you share your story?
Well, I was, I was going to say, if you don't mind, I would like to share a story. And again, we use Strayer as an example, so I'm so glad Dr. Bubser is here tonight to hear all this. Her front secretary is amazing, if you've not had an opportunity to go there. We've had one of our committee members that happened to be in the office at a time when a student came in late. And there was many things as adults as we can say when we see a chronic student continue coming in late, but the secretary looked at that student with genuine happiness and said, I'm so glad you came in today. Thank you for coming in. And that makes a difference. I'm in a different school district and I unfortunately had the opportunity to hear a very different response when a student came in late. That really was disheartening and I thought, wow, what is going to make that student continue walking down the hall to go to class instead of turning around and walking out the next door they see? And something is going on at Strayer and it's working and it's, we wish we could replicate it. I'm not saying it's not happening at other buildings, it was just what we had heard at Strayer and you're right, it's, the change needs to start within the staff and a change in culture and climate in the buildings will trickle down to the students and change their culture and climate.
I'd like to add on, thank you for sharing that story. Earlier in the week, probably two, was it, two days ago, three days ago, I was in Strayer and I told our greeter there that thank you very much that she was called out in a safety committee meeting. And she said, thank you, you're the third or fourth person who's referred to that meeting and that call out. And I'm very grateful. So there's, I think Jen, you probably said something and Dr. Bubser, I know Nancy said something and maybe one other person, but we all thanked her.
Good. Is there any other questions for this section?
I'm not sure if it applies to the section, like everyone else mentioned, thank you all so much for this work. This is very comprehensive and it's information that I think is just, you know, been enlightening for me. I would, I've mentioned this before, but I wonder if there's a way we can measure, take measurements of patterns, I guess, prior to implementing some of this stuff so we can know how effective we are being in some of the ways that we're implementing this. For example, I know we get, we get reports every month or so on, from the SROs about what's going on in the district. And sometimes you can look at things and think, oh, that's shocking. But then if you had some data to compare it to, to see if it was, oh, you know, this is, we're having a lot of incidents compared to last year or to maybe the five, last five years, something like that. So we can know that we're effective in what we're doing.
Yeah, in section two, we actually made a recommendation of doing better with data collection in certain areas so that we'll be able to compare once some, hopefully all of our recommendations are put into place, but at least some of them, and do that. So yeah, we definitely recommend that, that it's a great thing to do.
Do you think, Dr. Hunter, you think that's something that would take a lot of effort or?
Well, I think the, once you take the report, study it, study the video from their presentation tonight, and we all get together and talk about what you want us to do as goals for next year and subsequent years. I think that'd be a great place for our dialogue together as a team.
Sounds good.
I just wanted to add that I was really happy to see the, you know, the awareness and support section in there, as well as point out, the cellphone thing. What are we going to do? We don't have the answer about the cellphone thing. And I know it's a hard one, but we need to respect, you know, everybody's right to have their phone, but at the same time, students need to respect the fact that they're in school and respect the teacher and their peers. I know there is a thing that exists, it's like a bag that seals, that can be opened in an emergency, but it kind of seals, but it'll allow them to kind of keep their phone on themselves. And if it stays sealed in an emergency, it can be opened. I just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you for all your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Another, another great option for that, another great option for that actually, in the inexpensive route, is to just get a shoe organizer and hang it. Because you can just stick them on the little.
But in an emergency, they won't have access to their phones because it'll be hanging on the wall in the front of their room.
Well, or maybe again, as a protocol, maybe the teacher grabs it, rolls it up, takes it with them or.
But also at the same time, that phone can get stolen. And it's your responsibility when you take it to school. And it should be their responsibility and it is theirs. So we need to, we need to find that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, totally agree. Okay, so I'm going to just cover the last pillar of our recommendations, which is community awareness. It won't take too much longer to cover this because frankly, I think this is, the community awareness piece is really, it's going to cover everything that we've already talked to up to this point. So our first recommendation under here is to provide a robust, robust menu of parent education opportunities. You know, parents have a stake in all of this as well. It's not just the students, it's not just the schools and the staff. Parents have a responsibility here too. And I think sometimes as a parent, you know, you don't necessarily know. The vaping, for example, when that was brought as an important safety issue to high school students, it was very enlightening for me to understand that, first off, it has a charging component, which I wasn't aware of, but it also looks like a USB for your wireless mouse. I would never have known the difference. And as someone who has a 14-year-old, it's probably important for me to understand that going forward because perhaps maybe I wouldn't know anything about it at all. Another reason communication is really important, I think, for parents is something else that we've already spoken about, the Raptor system. We have heard lots of stories of frankly, parents who become irate when they're asked to raptor and because they would like access, of course, to their child, which is understandable. But at the same time, if a Raptor policy is in place to protect students, we as parents should not only understand it, but should be willing to comply with it as well. We already talked a little bit about the rationale for have, you know, bringing parents together, having some different kinds of events, YouTube videos, and certainly with the new website coming, which is very exciting. We will certainly be able to highlight some things on there if we would like to as well. Our next recommendations on community awareness are around increasing student, parent, and staff awareness of available supports. If you are a parent in the district, I don't know that you necessarily know what is even available to you. And that's on no one's fault, you know, no one's fault. You may have suddenly a child that has an issue and you may not necessarily know what to do or where to go to. And so I think some sort of an awareness campaign can help to sort of bridge the gap between what is offered and for parents who might be looking for answers where they can potentially, again, kind of connect in the middle to bring those resources where they're needed. One of the things that we also feel is very important is to keep the safety committee going. What we have learned as part of this opportunity has been eye-opening for all of us. The ability to sort of bridge the gap in all of these areas, I mean, it's the one thing that's been really interesting in all of this is that, you know, safety in our schools, as we already mentioned, it's never going to go away, right? But it is going to continue to grow and change and the needs of the district and what is required by the state, those things are going to change as well. I think having an ongoing body to look at this data, to understand it, and to recommend changes on an ongoing basis is very important. And then the last thing that I'll talk about is connecting parents to community resources. You know, every piece of research you can find shows that children that are involved in activities outside of school, you know, generally, that there's a positive correlation between those activities. Not everyone has the means to participate and I think as a district, we've already this school year done a very good job of putting the word out when there have been some opportunities to be involved in sports and things. But Pride of Quakertown is an excellent resource. And we also have, for example, in Q M F A, flag football is free for any child that would like to participate in that program. Does anyone have any recommendations? Questions?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Okay. I know, you're sick of seeing me, right, Stephen?
No!
You're like, how many committees is this?
Why would you think that? I would love to see this committee continue. I think the work that you all are doing is phenomenally important. I'm blown away by your presentation. I mean, obviously a lot of work and effort went into this and I think you're seeing firsthand a lot of the things that most of us don't see, okay? So I would love to see you guys continue doing what you're doing in some format.
Yeah.
Just my own personal opinion there.
Okay.
I'd also like to ask all of you just real quickly, was there any real eye-opening type things that you found where you went, oh my God?
Well, I mean, for me, I think the most eye-opening piece of all of this has been, we have to do more particularly in the higher level grades. We sometimes as adults always think that we know and we probably don't have a clue. And I think we need to support some of our older kids and really listen to them a little bit more. Again, the vaping piece of this was extraordinarily eye-opening for me. When I joined the committee, in my mind, safety in a school is about an active shooter scenario. And while that is extraordinarily important, it's also the least likely of all of the things that we've looked at to necessarily happen. And while you want to, again, while you want to prepare for that, there's a million other things that we can do in the meantime that go a long ways to, I think, just making a better, a better school district and a better community.
Okay, thank you.
As far as vaping, that just reminds me of the, we were thinking about, I wonder if you all considered sensors? Is it sensors that will go off alarm?
Mr. Kuzo, would you talk about that?
We actually did propose some of those. Unfortunately, the technology is not there.
Yeah.
I mean, they're available, but I mean, if you guys have represented this here, everything we've received has been, for the most part, false positive. If you're familiar with the Raspberry Pi is, that's all they are, with some cheap sensors attached to it.
Wow.
So I think that these companies trying to reap off the trend. So as of now, it's just not there.
Interesting.
I thought maybe they'd have like little paintball gun associated to it, you know, you'd be marked.
That's, that's a 2.0 version of the product. Yeah.
You mentioned earlier you have a 14-year-old, right?
I do.
Okay, I raised three kids. When they hit their teenage years, believe me, they will tell you everything you're doing wrong. You won't have to ask them.
Yeah, no, I know, yeah. Some days he's there already, so.
There you go.
We'll see. But I just, the last thing I just want to say is that, you know, safety really lives in this very gray area. It's kind of this blurred line between our schools and our families. And, you know, it's, it's the reason why, I mean, this really is something that everyone should care about.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question about the vaping? When you looked at vaping, did you, were looking at a possible policy to address vaping and, you know, how to address that when students are caught vaping? Did you talk about that at all or make any recommendations?
Well, I mean, policies is your thing, right? So.
Yeah, our committee is looking, but I just wondered if you had, your committee had thought about it.
We did discuss it in, we discussed, you know, here's kind of the current policy. We looked at it, I guess, more from a safety and health perspective versus like maybe from like a policy, maybe even to like a punishment kind of. We've discussed it, there's lots of varying opinions about that. You know, do you punish the child? Do you, you know, how does the parent come into all of that? It's, yeah, we ran the gamut.
Because we're like struggling with the.
If you'd like to talk about possibilities, we've got lots.
Was there a consensus at all or what were the, what were the thoughts?
We thought was good was the fines.
With the fines, okay.
So you all overwhelmingly thought the fines were a good practice? I'm struggling with that one, I'm not going to lie.
Well, I was going to say, not necessarily good, but it's the best thing at this time until someone has something better.
I mean, Saturday detention maybe cost us money, but.
Well, suspensions are in there too currently.
Right.
So it's a combination of suspensions and fines.
Right, it's our discretion, right?
Yeah.
I think that's one of those areas where you have to look at the data. One of our meetings. One of our meetings, you know, we were saying how students were saying, go into a bathroom, it was impossible to go into a bathroom at any time.
Yeah.
And not have multiple, but then you look at kids that were being caught and punished and the numbers are correlating. So if they weren't matching, so, I mean, on one hand, you gotta look at the data and see the consequences and the policies helping them to go down. Since you're living in the bathroom, so.
And that's why one of our recommendations was more education on the elementary level to again, get them to understand younger, hopefully, or like we're, vaping's occurring in middle school and then we're having vaping assemblies. Well, they're already vaping. So, and I don't know how much people have done research on it, but it's more addictive than smoking.
We had a presentation at my law firm, in my office, about vaping and it was very enlightening to me. And it is very addictive. And there's this myth, and I think a lot of adults have this myth, the parents do, that it's better than smoking. Well, it's really not.
We don't know yet, really, that's the theory thing.
And it's something, I think your education component is a good idea and needs to be done.
With the high school students, that was one of their priorities. We came in thinking security building issues and it was the students said it was bullying and vaping. That they were their priority, so.
They also felt bullied physically, thinking, because you weren't a strong, well, student, you went into the bathroom and you're constantly having somebody say, do you wanna try it? Like some kids felt obligated to say, yes, I'll try it. And I think initially, we were hearing how you were constantly being asked to try it. And now, I mean, I have friends that are saying, dude, don't ever try it. It's awful, I can't stop. So I almost don't know if there's a way to tap in to students kind of helping you. I don't know if they would, but.
I don't know. I think some of it too, though, is it's also kind of like, it's the new trendy thing, right? I mean, what, three or four years ago was not even a thing. I mean, now, you know, the car in front of you has their window down and otherwise you'd think that it was on fire. So, you know, the, I'm sorry, but like the plumes of smoke are amazing. I mean, it's just, it's amazing that the human body can even like ingest that.
A little point order, they, in 2017, on the seniors, when they filled out the PACE survey, the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, and under vaping, in 2017, 37% of our seniors said that they had vaped. And it was double over what the number was two years before.
Right.
And so that's two years ago.
It's a thing.
That's significant.
It's pretty darn significant.
And you're four or five months in Strayer too, and I'm gonna say that Strayer says you can't lock down the... It's just, I feel like it's getting younger and younger, which is like...
Yeah, I mean, I do think the one thing that will help the trend overall is that there has, you know, initially, you could get, you could get one of those devices just by going to a website if you had a credit card. You didn't have to be a certain age. You could just order it and it would come to your house. You know, now they're, they've removed the ability for students or for children to just automatically get them. It's more like, you know, cigarettes where you have to have the ID and the age. So I do think that will help. But, you know, I mean, there's kids that sell them, you know, I mean, it's, it's...
A lot of this comes around to parental control. I have two children, both of which went through Strayer and also are now in high school. Neither one of them, they do complain about it, especially my son, who is a special child. He is getting bullied and you are trapped in that area of how bullying and vaping are an issue. So I applaud that. However, I believe that first it must begin at home with an education. And as, the lady pointed that one out. A lot of parents are not up to date with it, but if there's an internet, there's a lot of access, a lot of information easily accessed. And I think that as a parent, you need to continue to educate yourself and then educate your child. That's what I do. And I think it's work. And it doesn't mean it's always been a work, it doesn't mean it always has or anything else. It's just you should be getting eyes and a little parents should be a first line of defense.
And that's why with a lot of our recommendations, we kind of let's bring it to where the people are. You know, the back to school nights, the parent-teacher conference nights, easily set up a table, like they have at the teachers. What do some of these vaping devices look like? How are they easily masked? So bring it to, spring some of these, talked about, to where the people are as opposed to something separate and have them come to you.
I think that's an excellent idea.
Two is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know, I was just saying what a good idea that is. I think that's an excellent idea.
But I think an important point too is not only the kids who are vaping, but like Karen, my son, go to Strayer and he avoids the bathrooms during the day because of the vaping. So it's impacting kids who aren't vaping, not wanting to go.
And that's not good.
To the bathroom.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kinda...
Yeah, what do you do out there?
Well, and I think, I don't wanna belabor this too much because I know there's lots to cover tonight. So just in closing, you know, we talked about a lot of things tonight. I think one of the things that we've tried to do very well is to not just pour a bunch of recommendations that cost lots and lots of money that we don't have. Many of our recommendations are low cost or at no cost at all. I think an ongoing committee can perhaps assist in some of the recommendations that we have provided. You know, I'm sure that there are parents that would love to volunteer and be a part of that and perhaps, again, bridge the gap some of some of this so that this isn't just a district problem, because it's not. You know, this is, again, this is a parent's responsibility, it's our community responsibility. And again, I know we talked early on about the risk and vulnerability assessment. One of the things, again, from a low-cost perspective, is that it is a possibility, depending on resources, that we may be able to have that done within the school year, depending on training. Right now, the state has every district on a six-month to one-year waitlist essentially to have this assessment done. But we may have some internal possibilities this spring. I believe Officer Lee is taking the training for it. And Bucks, the Bucks County IU, I think, has some individuals there. So that's something that hopefully we'll be able to do sooner rather than later and again, at low or no cost to the district. The last thing I just wanna say is thank you to Janet Pallone. Is she even still here? There she is. I'd like to thank Janet. She was a very significant resource to us during the meeting. Of course, Nancy Anne, our committee could not do our work without you. Thank you for everything that you did to make sure that we had the right research and resources and people to talk to and making the arrangements. We asked you to do a lot and as always, it was wonderful working with you. So thank you so much. I'd like to thank all the parents on the committee. And, you know, I'd like to thank Dr. Harner and all of you for allowing us as parents to be involved in the district. You know, this was really fun.
And Heidi, big shout out to Heidi.
Oh my goodness, Heidi, goodness. Heidi, thank you so much for the rights and the rewrites and the scheduling and you're amazing. You are amazing. So thank you very much.
And I think I speak for everybody up here when I wanna say thank you to each and every one of you that are on that committee. You've done a wonderful job. Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna have a slight change in schedule here. Dr. Harner?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Just moving one item on the agenda forward up because as you know, you see in the front ranks, we have Jamie, she's back.
Yeah, this actually wasn't on the agenda, by the way. It wasn't listed there.
Approval parameters resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for second round borrowing for Nightig project.
Okay. But I wasn't aware that there was gonna be a discussion. That's fine. I'm just saying, I was looking, I couldn't find it.
I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay.
But in the saving of their time, the team time, Jamie, would you speak to the board a few moments?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I do have some good news. As you may be following, in the news, interest rates have done nothing but go downward since we last met with you and started this process. So that is great news. I think this transaction is going to look much better than what we shared with you previously. Should you approve the parameters resolution this evening, we will be in a position to lock interest rates in very shortly. Everything is looking really better than ever. Other than that, I don't have anything to report, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Will it save us $10 million?
I don't think it's gonna save you quite that much, but it is looking good.
That was the shortest presentation we've had.
Well, you said you had a very full agenda. I would be happy to go on if you'd like.
That's quite all right.
Yes, the parameters resolution and I believe it's under Section 10 Fiscal Consent Agenda, Item D.
Do you wanna do that now? Okay. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna vote on this separately. Do we need a motion to pull it?
Just approve that single item, that's all.
Okay. Board members, what we're gonna do under the fiscal consent agenda, number 10, Item D, approve parameters resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds for second round borrowing for the Nightig project. We're gonna have a vote on that now. Does this need to be a roll call vote?
Not unless you hear dissent.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the parameters resolution authorizing the insurance of bonds and second round borrowing for the Nightig project as presented?
I'll motion. Oh, second.
Okay, who, was that? Okay. Discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Now back to your regularly scheduled meeting. Thank you. Okay, are you done, sir?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. We now move on to the student representative report and I see Mr. Jacob Lewis sitting over there patiently waiting his turn. Welcome, sir.
Welcome, thank you, thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Jake Lewis. You might remember me from one of the meetings in the fall. But if not, I'll start with a little bit about myself and then I'll get into the report. I'm currently a junior at the high school and I'm involved with National Honor Society, Key Club, and Future Business Leaders of America. I am also a captain of the varsity swim team and varsity lacrosse team. Speaking of lacrosse, I just came from our second game on the new Q and B field. The team really likes it and it helps out a lot with scheduling. So just kudos to the school district and Q and B for giving us another great turf field to play on.
How many more wins is it gonna get you?
Hopefully a lot, hopefully a lot.
Good answer.
Coming up soon on April 5th is Minithon, which is the annual 12-hour dance marathon to support the Four Diamonds Foundation, whose mission is to conquer childhood cancer. It is an overnight event held in the high school gym and it's really fun and it's for a great cause. April 5th also happens to be the end of the third marking period. And, you know, it's hard to believe that the school year is almost over. In fact, as of tomorrow, there are 52 school days left in the year, pending no more surprise winter storms, of course. Many of you might not know a lot about FBLA, but Future Business Leaders of America is a club for students interested in, you guessed it, business. We took a trip to the PPNL Center and got a behind-the-scenes tour of the Phantoms hockey team operation. More recently, we participated in the regional competition at Delaware Valley University. Those who placed in that competition are going to be attending the state competition from April 8th to 10th in Hershey, PA. We are all looking forward to it. Another upcoming event is the National Honor Society Trip to Great Adventure on April 25th. Junior prom is right around the corner on April 27th at Lehigh University. Everybody is really looking forward to it and getting prepared. I'm really liking my chances for best dancer award. Something I'd like to mention is that I've been taking Mandarin since it started in our district four years ago. This year, we took a trip to Flushing, New York, where we visited the Museum of Chinese in America, got to interact with people who predominantly speak Mandarin, and got to enjoy some delicious, authentic Chinese food. I know Mandarin isn't the primary language taken at the high school, but the small group of us that went really enjoyed this trip and appreciated it. Students recently learned about a program for rising seniors called Lehigh High School Scholars. If students apply and are accepted, they have the opportunity to take a college course at Lehigh University during the fall semester in addition to their high school academics. It's a great opportunity to get an inside look into college academics and college life. The seventh graders at Strayer are going on their annual outdoor school trip at the end of May and juniors and seniors could apply to become counselors. From what I've seen, a lot of kids are interested in becoming counselors because they had so much fun that they wanna go back. I'm sure other student reps will talk about these events that are a little farther off, but I just wanted to mention that the spring band concert is May 1st and the SATs will be held at our high school on May 4th. To wrap up, spring sports are all in full swing now and baseball and softball both went south to the Carolinas for a little spring training and the lacrosse team went to the high school gym. Who knows where track ran off to? Hopefully, you all get a chance to come to a game or two. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Well done.
Jake, would you tell them what your record is right now for lacrosse?
Three and one. We're three and one on the year. Thank you.
Jake, I have one question for you.
Yes.
Regarding the FBLA, do you get much, I'm not sure about our curriculum, do you learn much in high school excluding that about money?
Excluding FBLA, you're saying?
Do we emphasize that at all, taxes, money, debt?
We, you know, I haven't, I've heard that some of that material is covered in the personal finance course, which I haven't taken yet. I'm signed up to take it next year. We, I've heard also, again, I haven't taken this yet, I'm taking it next year, but I've heard that a lot of things regarding tax laws are covered in accounting too. This year, I was only in accounting one, which just kinda covered general, you know, accounting policies, not really on a personal level. You know, the business law course is another course that, you know, obviously covers different regulations and policies regarding money. But I would say that, you know, general things like mortgages and taxes and that, and budgets and debits, credits and all that, that would be covered in the personal finance course, which I've heard a lot of good things about.
So 52 days, not that you're counting.
Not that I'm counting.
Not that you're counting. Are you gonna be participating in Thon?
I am. Yeah, this will be my third year.
Awesome, great.
Yep, it's always a lot of fun.
Good, good. Well, if you're gonna win best dancer at the prom, I guess.
Yeah, it just makes sense.
You gotta practice up at Thon, right?
12 hours straight.
Since I'm sure you have homework and stuff, feel free to leave if you want and feel free to stay if you'd like. It's up to you.
Alrighty, thank you.
No pressure. Okay, moving on to standing committee reports now. First off is the Policy Committee. Mrs. Weed?
I know how everyone's thrilled by the Policy Committee. It's so exciting. But we did meet tonight and made some changes to policy recommendations. So I'm gonna go through the policies that we're recommending to the board and give the first reading. I'm not gonna read the entire policy, just tell you what they are. The first policy was with respect to tutoring students. And this policy, recommended wording was added to clarify for teachers and staff members that you may not tutor your own students for monetary. You can't be paid for tutoring your own students, long and short of it. And the language that is being added to this policy reads as follows. Pursuant to the Ethics Standards and Financial Disclosure Act 65 P A C S A 1001, Quakertown Community School District employees may not solicit for tutoring services for financial gain to any Q C S D student. So that's the first policy that we made a recommendation. The second is policy number 328.2. Oh, I forgot to give the number of the prior policy, was 116. The second policy is number 328.2 on... We just revised it to refer to the Act 93 Agreement and individual employment contracts. This policy had not been updated in a couple of decades, and that act has passed since then. So the, basically, we've deleted two pages of text that is no longer applicable and have just inserting under the guidelines that administrative salary increases shall be determined annually in accordance with the Act 93 Agreement then in effect, or in accordance with the individual's employment agreement where applicable. It just simplifies everything and applies the applicable law. The third policy is number 438, and this involves sabbatical leave of absence for professional development, and it was revised to reflect the actual practice of program review and recommendation to the Board of Approval. The changes, again, they're, they're redlined on board docs, I believe, or is that prospective? Prospective, okay.
Pick up the pace, Weed.
Not retroactive, prospective. This guideline will now read as follows. All applications for leaves of absence for the restoration of health or professional development shall meet the requirements as defined by the Public School Code, Section And then, under Paragraph 2, at the end of the policy, it is just clarified that the employee shall provide to the designee of the Board of School Directors. The designee is the Human Resources Department. Previously, it was, the language was confusing in that it indicated the employee would apply for sabbatical to, directly to the Board of Directors, and that's been clarified. We also discussed, and are meeting on Monday, April 1st at 6:00 PM for anyone who is interested, we are revisiting the community volunteer policy, number 916. I really appreciated the Safety Committee comments on that. I tend to agree with you that it should be the same as for the teachers and the employment, but the committee had wanted to look at that, and we are going to look at that on Monday. The other policy we're considering is the lunch debt policy. This was interesting, if I can find the numbers here, provided by Zach, but since the 2017 law was implemented, that we are not allowed to penalize students, we have to, we have to feed them at school, whether or not they can pay, that the year-to-date currently, in June of 2017, it was only $5,000 that was in debt. 2018, it went up to $11,000. Year-to-date now is $17,872. That's a huge job, and that indicates to the committee and should indicate to the Board, in my opinion, that we have some families and students out there that just are not paying for their meals. This is not, we don't believe all need-based. So we are going to come up with a policy that will put, I don't want to say the per punishment, but consequences for students who are not paying for their meals, because the, what happens is that the school district ends up being responsible for this debt because the parents and the students are not paying for their food. And the current total unpaid debt since this law was instituted is a little over $34,000. And I believe, oh, we're also on Monday night going to consider a new policy on public complaint procedures, and this will be new to our district, and we have a recommended PSSA policy. Well, we have a policy 906, but it's completely different than what the PSSA policy is. And I think that's it. We were looking at communicable diseases, and I believe we were waiting for an opinion from our attorney.
Next week, or not.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. And I think the, the last item on our agenda for this evening was that Mrs. Mitchell had requested that draft policies being brought to the board for first reading show the redline changes, rather than just having me read them, and we've agreed to do that prospectively, and we will be doing that from now on. So anyone interested can get on board docs and see what the redline changes are being recommended. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weed.
Very welcome.
Next is the Finance Committee. Mr. De Liberto.
We had six key topics that we covered tonight. The first one was scoreboard financing, so we'll be replacing the football field scoreboard and moving the one that's currently there down to the practice field. The scoreboard is inside the documentation, primarily being donated by St. Luke's. Payments made over five years totaling about $165,000. The scoreboard itself is about $210,000. Other items that were mentioned, QNB Bank is going to be contributing $7,500 per year for five years, and then projected advertising is about $6,600. So looking at the totals, it'll actually be on the positive for about $25,000 with that.
It's going to be like Jerry World?
It could be, it could be, if you want to contribute. The district's credit ranking was assessed by Moody's, and it came back as AA3 credit rating, which is a strong credit rating. Ms. Pallone gave us an update on the special education budget and the BCIU. The mid-year reconciliation is showing that we're going to come in about $1 million under budget in that area, and then she also talked about the upcoming budget process for the 2019, 2020 year that we'll be talking about for the budget in either May or June on that. We were also given 2018-19 budget projection update. We're looking at a $3.5 million surplus made up of $2 million of the sale of the two schools. The demolition of Milford was in at $580,000, and then the other balance is made up of just coming in under budget. The Upper Bucks County Technical School came in and made their budget presentation. We're looking at a 10% increase, which is equivalent of $330,000, and that's actually discussed later on tonight. And then the final piece that we're talking about is the upcoming budget. I want to have Zach give just some of the highlights of what's going on and what's, what's been completed.
We started our, I'll call it a budget journey, a couple months ago. The first presentation was on January 24th in the Finance Committee. Assuming everybody looked at that, we had about a $2.5 million deficit at that time. We presented again last month in February, it came down a little bit, about a $2.4 million, but as we said at that time, there's still a lot of unknown information. So tonight, we gave our third presentation. We're actually down to about a $1.7 million deficit. However, that also includes $400,000 for Ronald Reagan Boulevard, so when you look at it from a structural perspective, it's 1.3. I'm very comfortable with where we're at right now. I believe Lynn Rautson is, too, our Finance Director. As I stated last year, and it's still my opinion this year, a $1 million deficit is okay going into the next school year, because we typically see that that's made up through either, you know, good financial decisions throughout the school year, and a lot of it comes from attrition throughout the school year, as well as, you know, maybe an unpaid medical leave from a staff, for example. So we feel pretty strongly that, you know, we're in a good place right now. Might come down a little bit between now and April, so April 25th, you will be voting on the proposed final budget, and then we have to advertise that to our community, and then on June 6th, you'll be voting on the final budget. So that's the highlights. There is a lot of detail out on our website, both in board docs, and we also have a reports page specifically designated for the budget. And what we have done each, each committee meeting is Lynn Rautson has actually kept a very detailed, here is every single thing that has changed from the last time we presented the budget. So if you're interested in that, that is going to be up on our website tomorrow morning.
Any chance where he can come in and, like, reduce taxes?
That's your job.
That concludes the Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. De Liberto. Well done. Next, we have the Facilities Committee. Mrs. Mitchell.
Yes, we met, I believe, it was on the 7th of March. We had a beautiful virtual tour of the Nightig renovation project. I wish, is there any way we can have that somewhere on our website for folks to see? I think that it's beautiful, the way it's coming together, and we're starting to really finalize a lot of the, the project. So I think it's exciting, and I think that you all would probably, in the public, would be very much interested in that.
Is that a video?
It's not a video.
Video, animated?
Yeah, sort of.
Kids vaping on the bathroom.
Kids vaping. Not quite, not quite that, but it was, it's definitely, we got to see the different colors that are being recommended, and the, the classroom setting, and it's really great to see how much teacher input was being considered for, for the design aspect of the building. Yeah, it's been a huge community effort, and teacher feedback's been taken, so I really appreciated that. We also got back the results for Tewikin Valley, the lead results that, and, wait, hold on. Now I'm just making sure that I'm remembering correctly. Did we have the results at the time of that meeting, or did they come later?
I wasn't at the meeting. I think they came maybe the day after you had the meeting.
But they did come back, okay.
They did come back. There was one section that was below the requirements, but it was a little higher than we liked, so Rob actually swapped out that, that water fountain.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. We also discussed some easement agreements that we had with neighbors that are located next to the Nightig renovation, and it worked out really great. The, some of the neighbors were able to, and that's something that we're going to be voting on tonight, allocate some of their property, and in turn, I think there was a small amount of property that we are giving back to them, so it really was a mutually beneficial agreement, and I think those are always really good, and so we're very thankful for, for those neighbors who allowed that. We discussed the Tewikin Valley lease agreement, and that's, again, something we're going to be taking a look at tonight. The finalization of the sale for Milford and Tewikin Valley Elementary. The settlement date, I believe, we're going to be voting tonight to extend that just briefly. We also discussed the, the scoreboard, which, to Rob's point earlier, that is going to be paid for through various sponsors. And I believe that's the end of my report, unless there's anyone, anything that anyone would like to add? All right, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. Now comes three report, or three committees that Mr. Jackson chairs, so Mr. Jackson, feel free to just combine them into one report.
Three reports given faster than any one before.
Yes, sir.
The IU met last Tuesday. Summary of all actions taken is included, along with the awesome news, which highlights all the fun things going down at the IU. Please review same at your leisure. This is always put on the public portion of the website, too, so anybody's willing, anybody's always welcome to look and see what's going on at the IU. The legislative report is included as well, also as a public service, and it includes a detailed report of a lot of the legislation. The biggest one to highlight is the cyber charter school law. Specifically, so everybody knows, as long as we are providing a cyber program that is equal to any cyber program that a child would wish to send, to go to, a parent would have to pay tuition to that school, rather than our school paying that tuition, if our program is equal to theirs, essentially. So that's the key part of the legislative report. There's a lot of other things in there to look at. Please do so at your leisure. And the Ed Foundation did not meet last month. That concludes all three reports.
You were right, sir. Those were the fastest three reports ever. Okay, lastly, but not leastly, is the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Mr. Akmanowicz.
I thought I was going to have, like, 15 minutes to get ready. I'm all poking over here. The last joint operating committee of the Upper Bucks County Technical Schools on March 21st. Prior to conducting any board business, we honored the Skills USA District winning medalists from our sending schools. Our particular district, Quakertown, made up over, correct me if I'm wrong, over 50% of the 33 sending schools. I have to say, I'm very impressed with the showing of our success of the Quakertown students this year, and I'm very proud of all of them for their hard work and accomplishments, so congratulations to them. I'd like to make a request that these Quakertown students' names be documented into tonight's minutes, and I'll forward that list to Anita. The Upper Bucks County Technical School Student of the Month for March is Colin Patterson. Colin is a Quakertown student. Colin also placed first in this year's Skills USA competition. I believe he will now be competing in Louisville, Kentucky, and I believe he's a graphics artist.
We have state next, I believe.
Oh, yes, state's next.
We have state next in then, in two weeks.
Thank you. Jeff Sueda Superintendent reports stated he raised $2,000 by way of two independent donors for the food truck sponsorship, another old motorcycle, various other items, in total totaling about $6,500, which is a great month for the tech school and donations. There were some personnel changes approved. We voted and updated on the calendar for the 2019-2020, as well as approved some business functions. We accepted a few grants this month, which I feel are notable to mention to everybody. One of this is from the Lehigh Valley Community Foundation for $5,000, and a SLIP grant for the amount of $60,350. There was also a business education grant for $31,660, and that particular business education grant helps fund apprentices' wages, as well as upcoming STEM camp that we'll be having at the tech school for children, and it's going to help pay for the staff and the students, right? It's like tuition, yeah. And I think this is awesome, because this grant actually allows our students to work and gain experience in what they're doing, and actually be paid for it. Paid for their labor and time. A few important events. There's a whole bunch of them this month, but just to kind of really hit the important ones. The breakfast with the Easter Bunny, it's coming up on April 6th. Here's a flyer for it. I think we have some located at the front table, if you want to grab one on the way out, and they have breakfast and Easter Bunny and pictures. It's awesome. Next JOC board meeting is 4/18. Job Fair on 5/1 with Career Link at the Upper Bucks County Technical School. Skills USA Signing Day is at the Salz University. Is the signing day, they've signed on with employers? Is that, do I remember that properly?
No, sir. I believe it's a recognition.
Oh, thank you. Upper Bucks County Technical School Award Ceremony on 5/21, and then finally, June 24th through 28th is the Skills USA National Competition. That's in Louisville, Kentucky. Thank you. And that concludes my report for the Upper Bucks County Technical School for the month of March. Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Akmanowicz. Good report. All right, moving on to items for board action. Dr. Harner discussed this previously. This is a motion to approve the Board Resolution Regarding Cyber Charter Legislation Reform as Presented in the Superintendent's Report. There is a copy of the resolution in the public content section of board docs for anyone that wishes to review it. So do I have a motion to approve the Board Resolution Regarding Cyber Charter Legislation Reform as Presented?
Sir, moved.
Mr. Anderson, do we have a second?
Strong second.
Strong second from Mr. Akmanowicz. Discussion.
Once again, just to summarize the legislation that's at question, as long as your school district, well, we're paying approximately $13,000, $13,500.
$14,000.
Thank you. $14,500 for every child who wishes to go to a cyber school, because the way the law is, if a child chooses to go to a cyber school or any other charter school, we pay the cost of that. There's a formula that defines the amount, and we pay the cost of that, because they're a student in our district, and we're supposed to educate them, but they choose to go somewhere else. If a child happens to be a special education student, as judged by the institution, that price essentially doubles. This legislation would simply state that if your school district offers a cyber program that is equal in quality to the one that the parent chooses to send their child to, then the parents have to bore that cost, as opposed to the school district. That's essentially the legislation. Now, some points I want to bring up. The number of students who leave our district with an IEP, a designation- with an IEP, a designation that they need as special assistance, and go to a charter school of any kind, whether it be cyber or brick and mortar, if it were a set number, typically that number increases by a third the moment they are suddenly placed in a charter school. That's not some kind of scare tactic, that's simply statistical fact. So there's a high probability that the charter schools are inflating the needs of students in order to get additional funding out of the districts. The other consideration is that as a school district, my job here is to advocate for the school district, I'm not here to advocate for any other charter school or anybody else, so my personal opinions about charter school do not factor into my decision tonight. And this law is being crafted by Harrisburg, it's not something, it's not a policy that this district is crafting on its own, it's a law that the people in Harrisburg are coming up with. And if it's going to save us a million dollars a year, or whatever the actual number is...
1.92 is what we're...
Nearly $2 million, then as far as I'm concerned, I'm all for it.
I guess my counterargument would be, we're the bullies, we're the ones that just said we don't want any competition, we're just going to try to strong arm and make sure there's no, no way that any others can come and play. I think competition makes us stronger and sharper and better.
Equal accountability?
There is, they have to follow all the PDE rules. Matter of fact, there are cyber...
There's not one cyber charter school that has a proficient rating in the state.
Well, that would be like saying there's not one chunk of people with IEP that, that do as well as Jake. Like, I don't think that's a, that's not a, that's, that's a specious argument, I would say.
Well, actually, the question then becomes...
Well, in other words, you're talking about the SPP, right, like the SPP proficiency?
Yes, sir.
So that doesn't make a difference in terms of if a child needs to go to a special, more diverse educational situation, we're now depriving them of that potential. So, you know, the, it's like saying most people that go to the hospital end up dying. Well, no kidding. You know, so it's, so I don't think it's fair because our population here might not be the same as a, as a self-selecting population that goes to a cyber school. You know, so you can't, you can't make any wide sweeping, well, matter of fact, a lot of parents know that the SPP scores are bad and they still send them there. I'm just saying that...
So are you saying on the record that you're pro charter school?
No, I'm saying I'm pro basic ability to allow a diverse education and not just be a monopoly.
What does that mean?
We're a monopoly and we're throwing our weight around. It means that there's not just one way to educate a child.
So you, you believe in options other than public education?
I believe that we should support public education, we should support private schools, we should support charter schools, we should support choice. The ability for people to choose, I'm just saying we're throwing our weight around making it being a monopoly. Monopolies are bad, monopolies stifle.
Why don't you go be on a board of a private school then?
Because I'm here, because I think what we're doing is good. I'm just saying, why do we need to be a bully? We're, we should either stand by what we're doing is good and attract instead of repelling and trying to say that we're the only game in town. We've done that for 50 years.
We have done that with, Dr. Hoffman, probably weekly gets, we send out letters to the families that have gone to charter schools, we know who they are.
And we're bringing them back.
And we're bringing them back.
Damn right, and I don't need legislation to protect our ability to perform and be the best that we can be. I don't want to have to rely on some legislator to weigh the playing field so that we can win. We can win our own because we're damn good at it. So I'm just pro competition, I'm, our teachers can do a good enough job to attract people, we don't need to, to throw our weight around in legislation. So that's just me being a freedom loving, so like...
How'd that go for Philadelphia?
I don't know, this is...
It has not worked well in Philadelphia.
Not worked well at all.
I can tell you as someone who's worked down there, it has not worked.
Again, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not defending, you know, let's face it, the charter schools is another government tactic. So I'm, you know, I'm saying freedom is, is a good thing and I'm not saying the government's solution to a government problem is going to be better. You know, the day angels run governments.
Want no government, we know.
No, I'm not an anarchist, I'm just, I like competition. Competition makes everyone better.
Well, what about the fact that this will save the district 1.92 million dollars?
Well, let's also point out that we...
This legislation.
Let's, let's say, so you could actually make a case that when we spend $14,000, it costs us $21,000 to put a student in there, we get the pocket six grand and spend no money on them. So, you know, we actually make money.
I don't think so.
Yeah, hell yeah. We spend 21 grand a kid and we only have to pay 14 grand for that kid. So we get the pocket six grand and not take any cost. So we're actually making money.
Allow me to share John's devil, play devil's advocate with John.
I'm speaking devil's advocate, yeah.
But the interesting thing to note about this legislation from the opposite side is that it's geared strictly towards charter schools, it is not geared towards traditional brick and mortar schools. The question then becomes why? Pretty much you would assume every charter school that exists is that we provide an equal education to that charter school. Theoretically, we should be able to pass a legislation that says any charter school that opens, we should also force the parents to pay that bill too, because we offer a program that's equal or exceeds that charter school. So if you wish to play devil's advocate, the question becomes why is this legislating, legislation picking on charter schools? But I do not...
You mean cyber charter?
Cyber charter schools.
Cyber charter schools, you need to clarify that.
That's a great question.
But again, as a school board member in the Quakertown Community School District, responsible for the community in front of me and the students that it serves, if the legislation passes, that's a 1.92 million dollar windfall in my coffers and I'm taking it.
So we can lower taxes.
Well, we can cross that bridge.
If we promise to lower taxes for every, every dollar we pull in because that thing passes, I'll do it. You got my, you got my vote. Good luck promising that.
Speaking of voting, I think it's time to vote.
Yeah, let's vote.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. All in favor of the cyber charter resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries seven...
Freedom!
I'm just saying, like, when we have these retreats and people are like, oh, is everybody pro public education on this board and we say no? Oh, now you know why. This is the kind of stuff I'm talking about, that's all I'm saying.
Why am I, why?
Did we all attend, did we all attend the Tuesday night meeting just a couple days ago or did we not?
That's what I'm talking about.
No, you're the one who's speaking out of turn.
Am I?
Okay, let's, let's continue.
I am pro public education, it's ridiculous to say otherwise. I'm just not pro monopolies and I'm not pro government strong arming the, everything.
Mr. Kern's entitled to his opinions.
And as am I.
Let's, let's move on.
Well, no, your opinion can't be about judging me for my motivation.
Let's move on to public comment on fiscal items presented for a vote.
Can I make a public comment?
Sure. Oh, is this, is this about the fiscal?
This is what you just just voted on.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, but could you wait until the, the last, that's general public comment, this is specific for the fiscal consent agenda, sorry.
I didn't know where that fell.
Oh, I'm still figuring that out myself.
No, there's, there's a last public comment, it's general public comment. Yeah, yeah.
I thought that we had a four every quarter.
Okay, and any public comment regarding the fiscal agenda? Seeing none? This brings us to the fiscal agenda and on the fiscal agenda is, approve the Bucks County Technical School 2019-2020 budget, approve the February 2019 Boucher and James bills list. So now it's time to vote on the fiscal consent agenda as presented. Guys, please.
Move to, to approve the fiscal agenda.
I second.
I'm sorry, who, who was the second?
Oh, it's me.
It's okay, thank you. Okay, hearing no items for discussion?
Actually, you know this Boucher and James bill thing, I, I've asked this before, like, it's just an invoice with a total, like, and, and I'm just pointing it out again one more time and I'll, I'll cease to speak, but it's just an invoice with their name and write us a check for 12 Gs.
It's a good point, because when we discussed it, apparently they are one of the type of contracts that we don't need to go out to bid, it's like an ongoing relationship. You explained why and maybe you want to share that with the others.
So with Boucher and James, the invoice you're talking about, obviously this one is pulled out from the rest of the bills list because we have one board member who always abstains, it just makes it easier to do it this way. We do, I, I remember this came up before and we do make a point now to put down at the bottom every time what the bills are for, so this one is specifically for the Nightig Elementary project.
That is a little nebulous though, it really doesn't explain exactly what it's for, I mean...
So they're, they're the civil engineer for the Nightig project, so all civil engineering for that project, that, that is what they're doing.
So it's lower labors.
So they just submit time and material because they're the, the civil engineer of record for the district.
Okay, so this is for their hours that they spend?
For, for the Nightig project, so this will be, yeah, yep.
Can you add that really prominently in like 24-point font or something so that I never have to hear this question again?
Yeah, there will be other bills that aren't for the Nightig, so for example, I don't know if it was the last facilities committee or the one before, we, we needed to do some inspections on the baseball field, so we called Boucher and James, they come out, so then we put underneath there it was for the baseball field engineering.
It's a fair question, because we, we've been doing business with them, from what I understand, the reason we do business with them is because they are very aware of, you know, our district, we have some folks that are even really local, close by, are able to come and we're happy with their services, but I still think it's a fair question to want to understand why do we use them and not consider anyone else? Is that what you're...
No.
Okay.
Not, not this moment.
Not this moment, but I think that's, you're saying it comes up a lot and I think that's just what it is.
Say what it is, itemized.
It's not itemized, is what I think, Mr. Akmanowicz is. I'm just going to call you Dave.
We did have a public, a public bid on this back in the day and there were at least three bidders.
We don't bid on it anymore though, we're not required to, is from my, my understanding.
So it's a professional service, you're not legally required to bid it out. In these situations, you typically do an RFP because you can consider things other than just cost.
Right.
And I guess, yeah, years ago, there was an RFP for engineer of record services and Boucher and James was, was awarded that. So typically when we need civil engineering, that's who Rob or I call and then they simply submit their, their invoice for their time and material. We use them exclusively though for the Nightig project, so they've worked very closely with Dewey Engineering, who's the construction manager, and Schrader Group, the architect on, on the entire project.
So are we technically in a contract, it's like a job-to-job contract and we just continue to turn to them for...
There's no contract.
Well, I mean, the Nightig thing, for example, it's got to be a contract, they're just not going to...
It's, it's sort of falls under that engineer of record contract that we've had before, we don't have a specific one for that project, it's just time and material, but we have talked to them about putting something together, their total scope, now that we're halfway through the project, we want to know, give us an idea of what this is going to cost for the rest of the project. So they're actually working on that, to your point. We did ask for that about a week or two ago.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, hearing no more comments, all in favor of the fiscal consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstention.
One abstention, motion passes. Okay, that was the fiscal agenda, my apologies, now is the fiscal consent agenda. And on it, we've got a bunch of things. One is to approve budget transfers for February of 2019. It's approving the February 2019 Treasurers Report. Approve the February 2019 Bills List. We already voted on item D, so we need not talk about that. Approve contract addendum with St. Luke Sports Medicine Services and Sponsorship Agreement, that's for the athletic field sign. Approve contract with Daktronics to purchase the new 25-foot Panaview Integrated Video Display and Scoreboard for Alumni Field. Approve five-year equipment lease purchase agreement with First American Education Finance for the, the new panoramic scoreboard. And so now we need a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda items as presented.
I'll motion.
Ms. Mitchell, second?
Second.
Ms. Weed, discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now we have public comment on the facilities consent agenda. Seeing nobody wanting to publicly comment on the facilities consent agenda, we present the facilities consent agenda, which is the Nightig Elementary Neighbor Easement Agreement. Approval to extend the sales agreement for language regarding settlement from March 31st, April, I'm sorry. Approve to extend the sales agreement language regarding the settlement from March 31st to April 17th, that is for the Milford and Tooeckin schools. Approve the resolution authorizing district officials to execute sales documents for Milford and Tooeckin Valley. Approve the first right of refusal agreement between Quakertown Community School District and Faith Christian Academy. Approve, approval of Tooeckin Valley lease agreement with the Faith Christian Academy. Do I have a motion to approve the facilities consent agenda items as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, second by Mr. Kern, discussion?
The only question I have, because I'm looking at the lease agreement and it's going all the way to December 2020, I am not anticipating that, going beyond that, but I did notice there's a clause in there that says that they would be able to kick us out if they gave us 30 days' notice?
No.
No?
It goes, I believe, Mr....
Mr. Garten, could you speak into your microphone, please?
I believe that your COO has indicated that we expect to be out before then, this gives the additional time in case there's any kind of delays in the construction, so he can speak to that issue, I'm sure.
It says, okay, except however tenant may terminate this lease prior to December 31st, 2020.
We're the tenant.
So, so if we don't need it?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was confusing that.
We don't need it, the goal is...
So they can't tell us that we got to go?
Correct, we would have to material, yeah, we'd have to breach the contract that we're paying them $0 for, so...
And it better not go past that date, so, okay, thank you.
Any, any other discussion regarding the facilities consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next is public comment on the human resources items presented for a vote this evening. Seeing nobody for public comment, we move to the human resources consent agenda. We have the administrative staff, professional staff, unit pay, support staff, and the substitute staff. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel items as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Akmanowicz, a second?
Second, okay.
Ms. Weed, discussion?
I'm upset we're losing Mr. Finery.
Yeah, I want to, that, that one hurts. Is Mr. Finery here tonight? I don't believe he is, I didn't see him.
That's two leaders now that we have to replace because we're also losing an assistant principal too, so it's going to be, it's going to be tough.
But you know, I'm happy for him that, that he's furthering his career too, he's a good Okay, any further comments? No?
At least he didn't go to the IU.
Just wait a little bit, huh? Just wait.
All those in favor of the human resources consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Public comment on Office of Teaching and Learning items presented for a vote tonight. Okay, the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda is approve the contract with Imagine Learning, and that is the agenda, so I need a motion to approve the Office of Teaching and Learning Agenda Items as Presented.
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, do we have a second? Mr. Akmanowicz?
Can someone indulge me with the question? What are we approving? Is that content or is that testing or what is that?
Sure, so these are online student licenses, it's actually a company that we already have an agreement with, we've already vetted them and you've already approved it, we're just buying additional licenses. It's not something that we've always typically brought back to the board when it's not a new... new product, but because they listed it as a contract, and it's our obligation to approve contracts, rather than have them reword it so it sounded different, we thought it was just best to have it come to you. But Imagine Learning and Imagine Math are already products that we use in our schools.
What is it?
This is called Imagine Learning, it's the RILA side of their product.
Any further discussion?
Are we extending a three-year agreement? Are we buying, like it says, to approve a three-year agreement?
More individual licenses, sir.
But it's for three years, I believe. It's...
You know how, if you ever log in out of your office, this is how I always think about this, and you buy additional, isn't that what it's like? Yeah. And you buy additional...
Right, so we already have an agreement for our other licenses, but rather than just add those and not be transparent that we're spending more money and buying more licenses, we have a new three-year contract for these additional licenses. And there's some discounts in there because we already have the product in some of our grade levels.
How many additional licenses did we add? I mean, ballpark, 150?
Um, no, well...
600, sorry.
Well, it says 600, I didn't know if that was the total, or if that's what we added. I don't think it's what we added.
No, we added, so we were previously using it in some of our buildings, our Title I buildings, students that had disabilities, our ESL classrooms, and now we're offering it in all first-grade classrooms, and Chad here, kindergarten also, or just first grade. So it brings the, you know, it's an additional 400 or so students to add all the first graders in there. We had been doing a pilot with them to see how it was working, and we're very happy with the data, so adding those licenses in.
Thank you.
Are we happy with the results that we're getting? Like, when you look at the DIBBLES scores by grade, and where they're testing out at? Like, is that what's, like, I'm just trying to understand, like, when you look at, like, certain grades, like, a majority under 50% or under 40%, or not seeing improvement from one testing period to the next?
Sure, so in the areas that we've used this product, we've seen tremendous growth, both in math and in RILA. It's obviously an expensive product, so it's difficult to provide to more students. When we did some pretty deep data dives in all of our buildings, we felt like first grade was really a concern area for us in terms of our literacy skills, and sending students onto second grade who were significantly below grade level already was not something we were comfortable with. So we did the pilot, great feedback from the teachers, and also from our fall-to-winter scores. And so expanding it so that we can make sure that we put this into place for our students now, so that our second-grade teachers, third-grade teachers, and so on, have students coming to them, reading closer to grade level, or hopefully on or above grade level, is the purpose behind this.
What were some of the schools and grades that were part of the pilot?
So all first graders have been using it. I don't want to misspeak, because Ms. Alexa Carter's not here, but all first graders have been using it. So it would be, it would be all of them.
And then what's like the goal of the results that you're looking to get, and the scores when you're doing your DIBBLES tests?
Well, we don't only look at how this would relate to DIBBLES, we're looking more at the Lexile growth of our students, and also just the ability to access the curriculum. So if we have students in first grade who have difficulty with even letter recognition or word blends, this is trying to address that for them, so that we can get them to be more fluent readers as they move through the grade level. I think that the number-one thing that we are connecting with right now is in our, you know, each of our buildings have really successful data teams set up, and they're meeting with grade levels, the principals are meeting, their core teams, and we're hearing that, based on the time that the students are spending on this program, they're able to access the in-class curriculum, you know, which is ultimately our goal. So do we hope to see our test results from that? Of course, and it is a little difficult, because we don't, you know, in that early grade level, we have DIBBLES, we have some other testing, but not state testing. But we certainly are looking to see improvement in all of those tests that we give our students at that grade level.
Okay, thank you.
This already in your budget, or just approved in it? Or is it new purchase? Then not in the budget?
This is already in my budget, and is not any new money that I'm asking for. Just a different way of allocating it, so that we can stop using some other programs, and then reallocate money to this. Similar to, and I know some of you weren't on the board at the time, but when we purchased the math program from Imagine, we actually stopped using a couple other services that we were using, and just streamlined all the money into one product that we actually saw results with. Similar to that.
Okay, thank you. All right, all those in favor of the Office of Teaching and Learning Consent Agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that carries unanimously as well. It's public comment for the policies and program items being presented for a vote tonight. Seeing no public comments on that, we move to the policy and programs consent agenda. First, we have an approval for an addendum to a settlement agreement for student number 18704. Approve memorandum of understanding with Star Wellness, Inc. Approve agreement for private academic school placement services for student number 23057. Approval of Board Policy Committee recommendations. And do I have a motion to approve the policy and programs consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mrs. Weed, second?
Second.
Mr. Kern, discussion?
I think now I know where we were miscommunicating. This is not yet for a vote, it's just for the reading, right? See, that, I was thinking was for the vote. But no, it's, anyway.
So you two have kissed and made up now?
No.
Okay.
We have a love-hate relationship.
I know. Okay, all those...
Friendemies.
I like that. All those in favor of the policy and programs consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have information items. There is a statement of financial interest for 2018, reminder for all board members. I filled mine out this evening, because I had forgotten about it until I saw the reminder in board docs, so get yours in. February 2019 Student Activities Report is in the information items, as well as a letter of intent for the new tax collector for Richland Township subcontracted for reconciliation services for the period of July 1, 2018, to December 31, 2018. We have the Tahican Valley Elementary Lead Water Testing Results, we did discuss that earlier, and also copies of the deeds for the Milford Middle School and Tahican Valley properties between Quakertown Community School District and the Faith Christian Academy. Okay, this brings us to board comment, any new business that a board member would like to discuss?
Yes, please, this will be quick. I know, understand that the policy committee is gonna reevaluate their schedule, so that, currently the way it stands is that we have some committee meetings that are overlapping, which means that some board members are not allowed, they're not able to go to, so for instance, myself, I'm not able to go to a policy committee meeting, because I am, it always overlaps with another committee that I have. And I know the purpose of us reducing the meetings was so that we could spend more time in the committee meetings. So what I would like to suggest and ask from the administration is if there would be a way to do another look at the schedule, so that, one, I don't feel like any committee meeting, well, maybe not every single one, but I note that others feel that if you're in a finance committee meeting, and it starts at 6 o'clock, and you have an executive session at 6:30, you have 30 minutes, and it's super rushed. So I'd like to know what everyone else thinks, but I think the point of us going to less meetings was so we could focus more on committee meetings, therefore, I would like for, I don't believe any of the committee meetings should overlap, and I'm sort of questioning whether certain committee meetings should come directly before a board meeting. I don't know what you guys think.
I think we can do a better job with, at least eliminating the overlap of the committee meetings, so that anybody that would want to attend, you know, multiple ones can. As far as, you know, having them in front of a meeting like this, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, although your point is well-taken about the executive sessions sometimes eating into the committee meetings, too.
Or maybe like today, we started a little bit earlier, because we had an executive session. So maybe doing that as a practice?
So we reduced the number of board meetings, so that we could increase the number of committee meetings? Nights that we had to deal with committees? So we're taking the board meetings away, and simply replacing those nights with committee meetings? Because you want to separate the committee meetings, and I understand, I'm not, just clarifying.
I mean, I'm open to your feedback, if you are, I'm not on anybody else's committees, some of them you might not feel...
It's a good thing, because, you know, for people like yourself, who want to attend every meeting, every committee meeting, I'm not sure if you really want to attend everyone, but...
Not every, not everyone.
More, let's say more committee meetings, this will allow you to do that.
Right. Thank you.
But the administration does have to, then, make itself available for these meetings, we always have an administrative liaison.
Yep.
Yeah, I think one thing that Zach made mention of was, if we change the schedule, then we have to advertise the schedule, so we'd want to do it once, all at once, so that we wouldn't have to pay individual time. So I don't know the timeframe in which you all would be able to get us a schedule, like, I know the policy committee was thinking about it, but if we're all wanting to stop the overlap, maybe that's something the administration could suggest.
Sir, can you look into that and see about, you know, maybe reconfiguring the schedules?
We can, we can do that.
Thank you, sir.
I know for myself, just my work schedule, I would prefer if Ms. Edwards could, because she's our liaison for the policy committee, I would actually prefer to have policy committees, if the others are agreeable, on a night not before a board meeting. It's actually, we're rushed, it's, and it's often hard for me to get here by 5:45, and then we're still very rushed.
Yeah, I think poll everybody for what committees you want to be on, then it's, you know, one of those schedule games.
Doodle.
Well, even just in general, because it'd be like, can everyone, you know, make, like, how many people, to control how many people will need to be in the different meetings?
That's a good point.
You know, like...
Right, but if you're gonna put...
Some of them can overlap, because nobody gives, wants to be on two of them.
I was gonna say, if the whole point is to make the committees available to anybody who wants to show up, it would be necessity to have each meeting on a separate night.
Yeah, then we could have, like, school board week of the month. Monday it's this, Tuesday it's that, Wednesday it's this, Thursday it's that.
Well, we only have one, most months we have one board meeting, so that gives us three other weeks to work with.
All right, any other board items?
As the PSBA liaison, I do want to note for any board member here who is getting ginned up for some of our political discussions we just had, that April 29th is PSBA Advocacy Day in Harrisburg. So any school board member who has a desire is encouraged to go out to Harrisburg, there's gonna be a large contingent of school board members around the state, who are pounding the halls of Harrisburg, so to speak, and advocating for whatever we feel is important to us. Just letting you know.
Are you bringing students?
Yes, Dr. Harnett always brings students.
It's in cameras.
With the video club, yes.
My daughter really enjoyed that last year, so I'm plugging for bringing the students.
We're batting a thousand, I think, for three years in a row where the students there, the governor has been so gracious to give us his time, and...
Dr. Harnett is usually very good at cornering the governors, so he has no choice but to give us his time.
Mr. DeLiberato, you look like you wanted to say something.
I know we talked about with the committee new website, can we see like a sneak peek in April?
Not at this time. We literally just signed that contract last board meeting.
Okay.
So our goals are July 1 launch date.
Okay.
So they're currently taking some data from our website, and they'll start, as soon as they start porting it over, I can show you, we can show you some templates, but it won't be our information.
I was gonna say, maybe another district that they've worked on?
We can show you, that just wouldn't be us, so I can send that, provide that to whoever, and we can get that out to you.
Yeah, or if May's better, like, whatever, I mean, I think I'm excited for it, just because I tried to navigate it a couple times, and the search engine isn't so great with that. And then, two, just on a personal note, I'm trying to get ice hockey for, as a club, for the district, and we have some pretty heavy interest for middle school and high school. So we're looking for players, coaches, and sponsors, so spread the word for that.
Nancy Perkoff.
Yeah, so thank you.
That's a great sport, it's what I played in high school, so...
That's the dentist, you wanna coach?
I'll get back to you on that.
I have one thing.
Yes, sir?
I just want to continue to voice my concern about the compressor station, that seemingly, we kind of lost some traction here. We got a really toothless and worthless letter back from our state representatives that kind of waved their finger at people while patting themselves on their own back. I'm really, you know, not impressed, to say the least. I do have my imminent concern, and I had mentioned to some of you in private, and I'm bringing it up now here publicly, is ultimately with the school, Trump Byersvilleville Elementary being so close to the station, I had hoped that this board, maybe I could bring, I know a lot of people, and I'm sure I can find someone who I could bring in for maybe about 10 minutes, to maybe speak to us specifically on the issue of air quality, and how it might affect a school that might be that far away, as well as actually the students in our district that actually live in closer proximity. So I think that it might be good for everybody on this board to maybe hear that information, so that they could absorb it, you know, for later on reference.
No pun intended, absorb.
Right. No pun intended.
Since it's been a gap since the last time we talked about it, can you kind of refresh everybody as far as typically the pumping station is on X amount of acreage, and what we're, what's happening here, and...
Caitlin hit on a lot of the real, real specifics, as far as, like, they should be on, like, what, 50-acre parcels, or all those things?
I believe it was 50.
Yeah. Particularly these large diesel engines, there's four industrial large diesel engines are spitting out. You know, it's pumping compression, so that it pushes the gas through the line, and it's not really the gas that's the problem, it's the diesel that's burning, coming out of the pipes at the top, as well as the blowback, or the blowout from the line. You know, every once in a while, the pressure gets funky, and then it needs to blow out and burn. So it'll actually do that, and that is worse than actually the diesel engines. And so, you know, I'm really concerned, these fumes are generally associated with increases in leukemia, higher metals, increased respiratory infections, very, very close to this school and where our students live. And I know that it's not in our district, but I think we need to at least pay attention, and possibly consider air quality sensors prior to the installation of this compressor station, and then continue to monitor the air quality after the compressor station, if it is active at that time.
I was gonna ask some of my fire planning buddies if they have access to meters, you know, that you could install. I don't know, Rob, if we have anything like that, but I wonder if there's sensors that you could install and just start measuring it now?
I think that's a great idea.
See if there's any delta.
Mr. Akmanowicz, one question I would have for you, is you mentioned, I think the phrase you used was a toothless action.
Yes.
Yes.
That was the nicest thing I could think of.
So the board did draft a letter and send our concerns off to Harrisburg, I wasn't sure if it was Harrisburg, was it the EP, I believe, or EPA? And I know our, for those in the audience, our congressman, our Washington congressman also drafted a similar letter and sent it off to the EPA as well. Aside from that, what teeth can this district bear, do you believe? What action are you seeking from these nine individuals?
Right now, my imminent concern is, let's get a mark on the air quality as it is today, because in the worst-case scenario, this thing's going in, and I don't even want to talk about any of the other things we can do right now. My most imminent concern is the air quality, because of the long-term effects on our community.
I'll tell you what they can do, they have a platform. These people are elected, and their job is to protect their citizens and advocate for their citizens. So what they could do is use their pulpit, use their platform, to be able to build support around this, awareness around this, within the community, that it is indeed, you know, an imminent threat, and how it could impact other folks. And then also help those folks advocate in return, because a representative is only one person, and sort of corral people to start putting pressure on FERC, because they're very powerful. So those are just a couple things that I think that they would be able to do.
That goes again to other people, you're speaking of they, I'm asking about the nine of us, the 10 of us. Mr., Dr. Harnett is also a board member technically, I guess, what are you, what are you asking from us?
Oh, I thought he was talking about representatives.
Yeah, that's what I thought he was talking about, too. But yeah, I mean, there's lots, we can stand united. Mr. Garten, he's on our payroll, and he's a lawyer, you know?
Mr. Garten, he's on our payroll, and he's a lawyer, you know? These are really wonderful things, you know, that we have at our disposal that lots of other people don't. We have a lot of children that are in Trumpirsville, it's going to be 1.1 or 1.2 miles away from this thing, and open air, right, you know, downwind, right? And I had done a number in the past, you know, previously and last year, and I think I came up between a 20 and 30% time, the wind was blown in that direction, to your point, and I do owe you some information about the exhaust that comes out of those, and I did remember, and I'm working on gathering that information for you.
If you're going to be doing some more research on this, Mr. Akhmatowicz, or anybody else that wants to, where I work, my office is in Redding, and when I go there, I don't, you know, go the main roads because there's no direct way, I go a lot of backroads, and there's a little town I pass through called Bechtlesville, they have a compressor station. I drive right by it most mornings, and I can tell you probably half the time, I can smell the natural gas smell. And that's probably has to do with what you're saying about, you know, burning off and whatnot. But I'd be interested if, you know, anybody wanted to try to research maybe what has gone on in the town of Bechtlesville regarding this compressor station, if there's anything on record with air quality or anything like that. There could already be, or maybe there could be somebody out there that you could even speak to about what have they gone through having that in their backyard.
And I hope to be making connections with those people in the immediate future, I've been doing some research.
Okay.
Doing the best I can as one person with a really busy schedule. So, hopefully by the next time I come here, I will have more information, that it has some teeth for you guys.
And you, and you had asked originally, I'm sorry, you had asked about having somebody come in and discuss for maybe 10 minutes about air quality. Just myself, I, you know, I would welcome somebody to do that, so if you want to work with.
Best thing you can do is have a bully pulpit.
That's it.
So that more people understand the problem.
Yep.
That residents that are not necessarily next door understand the problem, so that it becomes more than just a regulatory dispute.
That's what I was going to say. I was going to go back to saying that the same recommendation that I have for our representatives is the same recommendation I would have for us, which is to bring the community, make them aware of the threat, and put, put the pressure on our elected officials, put the pressure on FERC to, to take this more seriously, and to put it in a location that is not following the criteria that's recommended.
Yep.
When you said our representative, are you meaning the Brian Fitzpatrick, our federal?
Yes.
Representative, okay, so you've already, well, we're going to get nowhere with this EPA, you know that. We're not.
I agree.
We're not. It's, the EPA is.
And any other board comments? Any other board comments, new business? Okay. Now, as the general public comment, thank you for your patience.
Stephanie Zakowski, Richland Township, I just want to thank the board for voting to support that resolution. I have been following the impact of cyber charter schools from a financial perspective in the state of Pennsylvania since 2011. It was that, at that time, that PA Auditor General, Jack Wagner, came out and published a report that said that the cyber schools, first of all, I want to, I should say, I'm all for competition. I think cyber schools are a great thing, I think private schools are a great thing, I think public schools are a great thing, all have a great fit. My daughter took cyber classes, so I'm a huge proponent of cyber. The issue with cyber and this resolution that is directed towards is the funding formula. And the funding formula for the PA cyber schools has been broken, and admittedly broken, by the state, our legislators, and those who drafted it for several years. So, starting back in 2011, PA Auditor General came out, strongly condemned the formula, and recommended that our representative sticks it. I've been writing our representatives every year, when it's time for budget, to take a look at it. To a cost of, back in 2012, it's costing the state $1 million a day. And that's back in 2012, cyber enrollment has greatly expanded since that time. So, imagine what the state could do with 365 million, probably close to double that right now, with that money.
You mean it costs the taxpayer?
Costing the taxpayers. I mean, we're the ones funding it, so it's costing people in this state that much money. The second thing is then, we had a new auditor general, I think in 2016, De Pasquale, he also took a look at it, came up with the same, same findings, that the funding formula is broken. I think the words he used were egregiously broken, and it needs to be addressed. So, I think this legislation that has been proposed is a good step in that direction. If you look at how cyber schools are run, and if you do a little digging, yes, most of them are nonprofits, but they make money, and they make a lot of money. And some, the head of the PA cyber school, actually in 2006, was convicted for tax evasion because what he was doing was taking some of those funds from his nonprofit and directing them to for-profit companies that he or stakeholders were under his control, under their control. So, they're taking your taxpayer dollars, funneling them to marketing programs.
But we can't use that to paint everybody.
You can't use it, correct, but it is.
Right, I mean, you can't just say, because one person does something wrong, the entire industry is bad.
You cannot, but because the formula is broken, if you look at where the cyber schools do their marketing, across the entire country, where do they do their marketing? Why, ask yourself, why do they do so much marketing in the state of Pennsylvania? You go to any other state, you will not hear the marketing campaigns that you do in Pennsylvania. So, why is that? And that is because PA's funding formula for cyber schools is the most attractive of any state in this country. So, all I ask you, I'm very happy that you passed that resolution. I would encourage you, Mr. Kern, to just, to do a little digging, because it's, I understand, I understand.
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds bad.
I understand your issue with it being monopoly. It's not about making sure that students have a variety of channels in order to receive their education, it's about fixing the formula that funds it.
Right, right. So, you make a very good point, if you don't mind, like, in other words, what you're, what you're saying is it was poorly set up.
Correct.
By the government.
Correct.
And now.
And there has been an impasse for, I mean, many years, an impasse. They cannot come up with a way to fix it.
What's the, what's the, it sounded to me like the adjustment went from a horrible model to, we're just going to shut you down and not actually adjust the funding model.
Now, the funding, what will happen then is, if you don't enable, so if as a parent, my district has a cyber school alternative, and it, and it is equally, from a quality standpoint.
It'll be equal, you can't measure it.
It is equal, and you choose not to go there, then instead of me, the taxpayer, having to put out the $14,000 per student to go there, I, as the parent, have to put out the $14,000. Do you really?
Which, of course, you're not going to do that.
Correct, and do you really, do you really think?
That's not, that's not an adjustment, that's, I'm going to shut it down.
But.
They didn't say, let's adjust it from 75, 80% to like 20%.
But if that cyber school, like PA cyber school is one of, it's, it's a, it's run by a larger conglomerate, that's not how they're funding, that's not how their tuition formula works in other states. So, in other states where it's not as attractive, they don't charge the families the $14,000 to go there.
Of course not.
It's at a much lower rate. So, it is a win-win for everyone, because now you're basically looking to charge students what it costs you to educate this child in that school, not what it costs to educate a child in the district from which they come from in a brick-and-mortar environment. If you live in Lower Marion, those cyber school kids, that PA cyber is getting paid 20s.
Money.
$20,000 for the same education. It's the same.
Yeah, it sounds like a stupid formula.
But just because they come from Lower Marion, the PA cyber gets more money. And of course, school districts in this area, the funding formula's a little higher than if you're out in the middle, the central part of the state, that, out in the central part of the state, they may only be getting $5,000, $6,000 per student. I guarantee you, they're not running the same marketing programs out there, out in the middle of the state that they are here where the, where the funding formula's attractive. So, just, I encourage you to just do a little bit of digging. It is eye-opening, you would think that when it comes to education, there wouldn't be people looking to make money off of our kids and our taxpayers, but they are.
But there are, there are for-profit schools. It's a real problem.
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing wrong about making a profit.
Debate that philosophically, but.
No, no, but.
Profit is a good thing.
It is, but it's egregious.
But it's a dumb formula, it sounds like what you're saying.
It is, it is a formula issue, so this resolution, it's not perfect, but until our lawmakers can come up with something that addresses the formula, this is one way to at least.
And lawmakers will never come up with the best formula like the actual free market would.
But if you look at other states, Pennsylvania is definitely.
Yeah, it sounds like an outlier, yeah, it sounds horrible, because, you know, people try to use enough knobs and dials to control the population with their, with their legislation, and they never get it right.
Correct.
And now they're trying to adjust it, seems like the pendulum might be swinging a little far. But yeah, again, I'm not trying to promote it, I'm just saying, don't just shut it down, you know, or maybe just totally shut it down. Don't put this goofy legislation out there, just shut it down so it was a bad idea. Thank you so much for your comments, and obviously you've been following this, you knew that stuff right off the top of your head. Thank you. Any other general public comments? Okay, I saw her hand up first.
I apologize for not turning my form in on time, do you, it took me that? All right, all right, all right. Hello, my name is Vicki Callen, I live in the Richland Township. I have a daughter in ninth grade who is in the jazz ensemble, and my son is at Strayer, he's a seventh grader in the Strayer Jazz Band. And so, I've come to talk to you about how fabulous my week was last week, and I'll try to be fast, because I have some other things to say. In the span of seven days, I was able to see that jazz ensemble at the high school, led by Mr. Parker, just blow the roof off the place at Steel Stacks. And I will bet all of my money that they are going to win the finals. They were amazing, and if you haven't heard their set, you have missed out, because it was fabulous. I then saw my son in two jazz festivals where Mr. Santinello's Jazz Band got a superior rating, and they were the only band to do that in both festivals. And we've got another one tomorrow, which I'm sure we're just going to scorch the place again. And I was just so, like, I was on a cloud for all week, because I was so proud of our music department here in Quakertown, like, I was strutting around my school in North Penn with a smile on my face a mile wide. Then, my bubble burst, and I got wind of two things that confirm in my head that we are just chipping away at this music department. And Dr. Harner, I like you, you are a great guy, and I am so happy that you are here in our district, and I know that you and I have a great relationship, I respect what you do, but I don't understand the things that are happening as far as our personnel. The money that you have given to Strayer for their band instruments is wonderful, like, that is fantastic, and I'm so glad that you support the instruments that are needed for the school. But here is what I heard. I heard that next year, Mr. Silvius is going to have to teach strings along with his band lessons. And I know that last year, we fought hard to keep one of the positions that was going to go away. And we got up here one by one to tell you how important it was, and the board, you were excellent. You heard our concerns, you took them to heart, and you allowed us to keep that position. And in my, my personal opinion was, I was hoping, because I wasn't keeping quite track of what was going on, but my impression was, this position that we were keeping was going to help the program that we already had in place, that it was going to kind of lift the pressure valve off of Mr. Parker and Mr. Santinello, who was doing pretty much everything in the district. They're sharing marching band responsibilities, they're doing jazz bands after school, they're going off on these competitions, and I thought that person that we were going to keep was going to kind of help everybody get lifted up. However, the position went to this new strings program. Now, I, this is where I'm confused, because we fought for one position, and now that one position is going to need more positions. This string program is going to keep, keep moving up into the high school, and to have Mr. Silvius shove his, like, band lessons into a smaller, you know, piece of his schedule to accommodate strings, that is going to snow, it's going to be a snowball effect all the way through middle and high school. Less lessons that they have at the sixth-grade center is going to affect their ability level at the middle school, and so on, and so on, and so on. And so, I would just like to make you aware of this, you may not see, like, the, the big umbrella as we go through, like, these little things that we come up here for and talk to you about, but this is what I see. I'm a music teacher in North Penn, and I see this little chipping away of the strength that we have here in Quakertown. And so, I am worried. I am worried about how the band program and all of the other music things that we have going on are going to be affected by this new program that is only being supported by one extra teacher, and everybody else has to kind of adjust. And that's what I kept telling other, other people, you know, these music teachers, they will adjust to whatever gets thrown on them, but it's going to wear them down, it's going to burn them out, and they're not going to be able to do everything. Hence, the second thing that I heard this week that burst my bubble, is that it has been told to the, the students, that Mr. Santinello is not going to keep doing his jazz cafe next year. That's the building band for the jazz ensemble. And we are not upset with him, because we know that he works extremely hard, and he deserves some personal time. And so, we're not mad, but once again, we are pushing these, these people to do extraordinary things, and it would be great if we had more personnel to kind of help out. Who's going to be the farm, who's going to lead the farm jazz band, so that Mr. Parker still has an excellent jazz ensemble that kicks butt at Steel Stacks? That's my concern. I want Quakertown to continue being on the map. I love it when I tout my bands in North Penn, but I see this, like, little, like, taking away of what's strong here in Quakertown. So, I wanted to share my great news, but I also wanted to get it in your head that it may not seem small at first, but it's going to snowball. And I'm done, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we get a four-year staffing plan for strings? Because we have not looked at that, and I'm just, based on that feedback, I'm curious to know if we would be looking at adding positions down the road or reallocating resources.
I presented that several months ago at a meeting, a six-year staffing plan and costing plan, I'm happy to resend that to you.
So, I don't recall if we were going to add staffing or not.
We can bring it, if you'd like to discuss at a meeting, we'll send the staffing plan out, and, and what was briefed at the board meeting, I believe, back in the fall, back in the fall, and look at it again.
So, can you just clarify for me right now? Are we adding positions, or are we reallocating?
Eventually, we will need to add another teacher, yes. Mr. Silvius is well-aware and has been aware before we even hired this last teacher, that he would be working with strings next year. He does not have a full schedule right now, so part of our discussion about having him be the teacher for one grade level was that he would be able to pick that up, and, and he's aware of that. I can understand the concern about needing to increase staff in the future, and that's why we presented that as part of our plan. So, as I said, I'm happy to reshare that with you.
And, and I know, don't go to every concert, but I do my best to go to these concerts, and, and our team of music teachers, both choral music and, and band are just extraordinary. And Joe, Frank, everybody else, Todd, and all the folks in the elementary schools do a great job of feeding into the secondary programs. And I was not aware until just now that there was this discussion about not having a jazz band at the middle school. Were you aware of that?
The second band at the high. Joe is not planning to do the ensemble next year, but if another teacher wants to step up and do it, I'm sure there would be an argument.
Right, so some, just a clarification point also, just so that everyone's aware, some of the, the activities that you mentioned, like marching band and those things, we post for those positions as unit-pay positions every year, they are separate from the teaching contract, so anybody in the district who, you know, usually it's a music teacher, because we want to make sure that they are appropriately certified to work with the students, but can apply for those. So, if he, I was not made aware that he wasn't interested in doing that, but the position would still be posted, and any of the music teachers in our district could receive that extra duty pay for, for doing that work.
Thank you. Mr. Spear, did you want to speak?
I'll be quick. Chinese. Got to get dinner. Hey, drop soup tonight? Uh, fried chicken fried rice.
Chris Spear, Milford Township. I actually had no intention on speaking, like I usually say, but the charter school issue. school issue is something that I've brought up so many times. I mean, all the way back to when you closed Milford. You know, closing Milford opens the door for more charter competition, because it's going to make this district not as strong. So anyway, what I wrote down here was that public schools are not monopolies, they're held accountable by voters. No private company has this kind of accountability. We have only one military, we have only one government, but they're held accountable by the people that vote for them. Public schools are exactly that, public, and that's what separates them from private, albeit publicly funded, schools. Uh, the charters ran in, in some cases by for-profit companies will act more like monopolies, accountable to shareholders and paid board members. Um, charters exist in areas where school districts fail the population in which they serve. Ours has not. We need to work hard to strengthen our schools so that the budget draining that the charters bring with them doesn't come here. It's honestly frightening that members of this board are in such support of charters. It seems to counteract your position on this board. If you want the government out of education, then you should want the public money out of it too. So charters should not get any public money then, if that's your answer. So I agree with the vote that you had, although I oppose anybody who opposed it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Any other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
You can give it after.
My name's Victoria Gonzalez. I have a, a senior attending Quakertown High School, and there were two issues that, one concern actually Vicki Callen just brought up was, I personally felt at the be, at the end of last year, when we were voting on this extra position for music support, I feel we got duped as parents. We were supporting it, thinking this was going to alleviate the pressure of the music program, and no sooner the school year began, it was, oh, now we have a whole new section. Personally, I, I grew up in the music, um, education system. I was a strings player, um, and I also saw the strain it put on our household. It is not like a typical instrument where you have care and maintenance. Strings carry a lot more, um, care and maintenance, and as you progress, it's not like other instruments where, here's your next level, you can ca- carry that instrument on. I watched my parents literally tell me how much violin and viola, and how much it was costing them that, um, I got accepted into Juilliard, and I actually turned it down because I saw the expense, it was hitting my family. So you have to look at the long term. Don't just look at, hey, this is a great thing, it's going to build it up, but when these kids start to propel, are they financially ready to handle all of that pressure that comes with it for a household? You can cripple a household, and, and I'm just calling you out on that. The second issue I have that also has to do with the music program was, again, feeling duped as a parent. My child sold, two years ago, or three years ago, 12 boxes of chocolates, sold them out, covered her trips for two years, which took a huge burden off of us as a family. I'm a single parent. I work two jobs. This year, I watched kids panicked and stressing how to get rid of the chocolates. It just seems like there was no support. If the money's not there, allow them a resource and an outlet to get rid of those candies, or find another fundraising opportunity that will help support the program. And I personally didn't need to sell any this year, my daughter didn't need to, she had all her trips paid for the next two years and this year. I bought three boxes for kids, just to take to my office, because I watched these families stressed out how to get rid of it, because they were told they could not now sell in the school, which, to be honest, that's how my daughter sold hers two years ago. She had teachers approaching her, knowing she had the chocolates in the hallways, not during class time, and she was able to alleviate and get rid of those, those boxes. I sold four, she sold the rest on her own. Um, so those are two things I'm looking for this year. More transparency on these positions that we as parents fight for, and second, more support if we're not going to have the money to support these programs, and you need an outlet for these kids to be able to fund these programs that are extra curriculum.
Ms. Gonzalez, are you speaking about the travel club when you're talking about those chocolate bars, or you were talking about, you were talking about trips? What are you talking about?
Uh, it, the chocolate money that we sold two years ago funded the choir tour for my daughter. Whole trip got covered from the chocolates. It also paid for extra curriculum.
So you're asking about additional funding? The reason I bring up the charter-
I'm not asking for funding.
No, no, I'm just saying-
I'm asking for the support. If you're not going to allow us to, with all these kids, an outlet to do fundraising-
Right, but you're speaking of the chocolate, like, that's the only recourse you have.
There were other fundraisers, but that was, that was the one that, for us, was a big benefit, and-
Because, I mean, there's like a dozen ways to earn money, and if the chocolate is that paramount, like, you know-
Oh, it was. Gertrude Hawke had a huge, um, profit margin for the kids, so that was the most popular one, and my kid is not a band kid, but we chose that, we piggybacked onto the band fundraiser, because we knew that was, had a better profit margin for her. So, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What was this about the, um, the candy, and then now we can't sell it in school, but they were able to sell it in school before? Did I understand that properly?
They were told before, as long as it wasn't during class time, as long as it wasn't, um, disruptive in any way, so she was, I know for her, she would just have the box, she didn't solicit during lunchtime, kids came over, bought it, after school, before school, that's how she was able to get rid of her boxes last year. Um, and this year, students were, and I did witness it myself, were told, absolutely not. They could not sell it.
Can somebody just confirm that for me?
Sure, there's, there's two general issues at play. One is, um, some of our policies with wellness and, and the health and wellness policies, the same is why we don't sell cookies at lunch anymore. We've had that conversation before about different things that you can and can't buy. And the other thing-
But we're not selling the candy bars, they are.
Right. I'm, I'm just letting you know that that's part of the reason. And the second issue is that it was an absolute disturbance to the school, and you can ask the, um, high school administration to share that students were soliciting and were selling in the middle of class and, and causing a concern.
But I witnessed, um, or I've, I know of a fact that other groups were still allowed to continue to do theirs. It's almost like we were shut down, personally, from my feeling.
I'd, I'd be happy to look into that, if you want to give me more information on that.
Chinese group would be, the Chinese club was one. They continued to sell theirs the whole time.
Thank you. Any other public comment? State your name and area of residence, please.
Yeah, my name is Terry Atler. I was here last month. My location is Edgemont Avenue in the borough. I made a proposal last month, which the board graciously listened to, and Dr. Harner and Ms. Pallone, um, were kind enough to entertain me and talk about that discussion. I would like to see the policy, um, brought up in the meeting that you're going to hold on April 1st, if there's any possibility. However, my sole purpose for tonight is to thank Dr. Harner and Ms. Pallone. That was very gracious of both of them. Thank you.
Sir, just so you know, the Policy Committee meeting is open to the public, and you can show up and talk.
I just, I'm sorry, would you-
The Policy Committee meeting on Monday night is a public meeting.
Yes, April 1st at 6:00.
Yes, so you can-
I will be there. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Okay, uh, moving on to the calendar items. On March 28th, we have the next Finance Committee meet, oh, that's today. Huh. Uh, see, I'm just conditioned to read. Um, on, on April 4th, we have the next Facilities Committee meeting in Community Room A. On April 11th, at 6:00, is the next Education and Curriculum meeting, also in Community Room A, followed by, uh, the next Work Session Voting Meeting at 7:00. On April 25th, we have Policy Committee meeting, Board Caucus Conference Room Number 3. We have the Finance Committee meeting, Community Room A, and again, followed by the regular Work Session Regular Voting Meeting at 7:00. On May 6th is, uh, the next Work Session Regular Voting Meeting. On May 23rd is a Work Session Regular Voting Meeting. On June 6th, when we vote for the budget. See, I listened. Um, is the Facilities Committee meeting and the Work Session Regular Voting Meeting, and on June 14th is commencement at Stabler Arena. You going to be there, Jake?
Maybe.
Okay, cool.